Bonjour tout le monde, bonjour à tous. Bienvenue, bienvenue. Je voudrais appeler la réunion à l'ordre maintenant, s'il vous plaît. All right, commençons. Juste avant de commencer, je veux prendre un moment ce matin pour remercier notre personnel. Au cours de la semaine dernière, nous avons été confrontés à deux grands défis : l'ondée et quelques problèmes avec le système de rail routier. Et je veux prendre l'opportunité de remercier le personnel de Public Works, l'administration d'urgence, Hydro Ottawa et OC Transpho et tous les autres employés de la société qui ont fait des efforts heroïques pour notre communauté au cours de ce temps difficile et qui continue de travailler difficilement comme nous nous poursuivons et nettoyons tous ces problèmes. Donc merci à tous les employés. Je veux aussi prendre un moment pour reconnaître que c'est le jour international du Pink, un jour contre la bullying, la discrimination, la homophobie, la transphobie et la transmisogéné. Et aujourd'hui est également le 12 avril, qui est l'anniversaire du jour de 1980 où Terry Fox a commencé le marathon de l'espoir. Donc je mentionnerai cela aussi lorsqu'on commencera aujourd'hui. Pour ceux qui sont en mesure, s'il vous plaît, montez pour un moment de réflexion personnelle. Merci. En commençant notre réunion aujourd'hui et en nom de la municipalité de la ville d'Ottawa, je veux reconnaître que l'Ottawa est construite sur un territoire Anishnaabe-Algonquin. Les peuples de la nation Anishnaabe-Algonquin ont vécu sur ce territoire depuis des millénaires. Seul leur culture et leur présence ont nourri et continuent de nourrir cette terre. La ville d'Ottawa honore les peuples et la terre de la nation Anishnaabe-Algonquin et honore tous les paysuns Inuit et Métis et leurs précieux contributions passées et actuelles à cette terre. Je vais maintenant demander à la procureure de parole, s'il vous plaît.
Le conseil Lulov ? Conseil Dudas ?
Présent.
Conseil Hill ?
Présent.
Conseil Curry ?
Ici.
Conseil Kelly ?
Présent.
Conseil Gower ? Conseil Kavanaugh ?
Ici.
Conseil Johnson ?
Ici.
Conseil Divine ?
Ici.
Conseil Bradley ?
Ici.
Conseil Tierney ?
Présent.
Conseil Plant ?
Ici.
Conseil King ?
Ici.
Conseil Troster ?
Ici.
Conseil Leeper ?
Bonjour.
Conseil Brockington ?
Ici.
Conseil Menard ?
Ici.
Conseil Carr ?
Ici.
Conseil Kits ?
Ici.
Conseil DeRusse ?
Oui.
Conseil Brown ?
Ici.
Conseil Darush ?
Ok.
Conseil Hubley ? Conseil Lowe ?
Ici.
Maire Setcliffe ?
Ici.
Vous avez un discours, maire.
Merci. Confirmation of minutes from the council meeting of the 22nd of March. Are those minutes confirmed? Carried? Are there any declarations of interest? We have a few communications as noted on the agenda. Are those received? There were no regrets that were filed. Motion to introduce reports, conseil Dudas.
Seven of Gloucester, as in NS eighteen fifty-nine thirty-three. Secondly, through, uh, tenthly, except five R eight two six nine five R nine nine five seven, five R one zero zero nine two Gloucester, the subject lands and got through that. Whereas the subject lands are owned by the Algonquins of Ontario Realty Corporation, which has partnership with Taggart Groups of Camp, uh, Companies, um, in relation to the subject lands. And whereas the O A A publicly stated in the Ottawa Citizen in, on March twenty twenty-three, that the tree cutting removal that had taken place on the subject land was in part to clean up from the twenty twenty-two Durecho storm event and to return the land to viable farming activity and furtherance of agriculture sustainability. And whereas Taggart in its communication to the public and to the city of Ottawa dated March third, twenty twenty-three, stated that the tree cutting removal was in relation to the storm cleanup and to facilitate the farming operations of the subject lands. And whereas the Tree Protection Bylaw twenty twenty dash three forty, the bylaw, was enacted by city council to protect trees in the city of Ottawa, including trees on private property greater than one hectare and identified on schedules G two O of the bylaw. And whereas the subject lands are greater than one hectare in size and fall within the lands depicted in Schedule M of the bylaw. And whereas the subsection eighty-two seven of the bylaw provides that a tree permit is not required for the destruction of a tree or trees where the destruction is due to normal farm practices carried out as a, a, a part of the agriculture operations of a farming business. And whereas the province has established the Normal Farm Practices Protection Board, the board, under the Farming and Food Production Protection Act nineteen ninety-eight, the act, to assist in the determination of what constitutes a normal farm practice under the act and the interplay of such practices with municipal bylaws. And whereas a determination by the board may assist the city and the public in assessing what constitute a normal farm practice in relation to municipal tree protection bylaws generally, and may assist in providing clarity specifically as to whether the recent acts of the subject lands constitute a normal farm practice under the act and/or under the bylaw. And whereas staff have been directed to investigate and report back on potential changes to the exemption eighty-two seven of the bylaw to require landlords to obtain a formal exemption with evidence provided and communicate with neighbors, the board councillor, city staff prior to tree removals, including where a permit is not required by the bylaw, where the activity exempt from the provisions of the bylaw. Therefore, be it resolved that staff investigation include consultation with the board and the province on additional requirements that can be placed around the exemption for normal farm practices, while ensuring the intention of the act is met, as well as decision-making support for determining when a tree removal activity is considered a normal farm practice and an assessment of exemptions for normal farm practices and related implement implementation processes in other tree bylaws in Ontario. And be further resolved that the general manager of Planning, Real Estate and Economic Development Department report to the Environment and Climate Change Committee and the Agriculture and Rural Affairs Committee in Q three twenty twenty-three as to the outcome of the staff's investigation and any associated recommendations to the Tree Protection Bylaw twenty twenty-three forty. I realize that was very long and very technical.
Twenty seconds left now to speak to that.
Okay.
I'll give you, I'll give you a bit of attitude there.
It's very important. And, um, I've heard from Just Foods who are actual farmers, um, and this is a, a bit of an insult to actual farmers because they work very hard to have that balance of farmland versus, um, our, our tree canopy. And, and that concerns me and they, they don't want this to be considered to be normal farm practices. It harms all farms that are basically tarred with the same brush. These actions were in bad faith. And it's, it was a risk they took, but our bylaw, let's face it, had a hole in it. We need to work with staff and council towards a vision that we share for the city, not someone else's vision, who continue to look for loopholes. That is not the way we should be doing things. Many farmers in rural Ottawa are happy to steward woodlots, hedgerows, wetlands, and with a minimum annual payment that acknowledged the huge benefits that they provide to the city and its residents. And I'm sure we can do that throughout the city. So we have some work to do. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kavanaugh. Councillor DeRus.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate, uh, the motion. And, uh, to us as a rural councillor, we do have a fine line to walk, especially when it comes to clearing land for farming in our rural community. But I have a question to staff concerning that motion. Uh, like, I understand the intent, the intention of it and, and I understand that our staff did the right thing investigating and looked at the whole case before, when this happened. And I know that, uh, our general manager, Don Huire, sent a memo to all council. And I'm sure to, with our legal department to making sure this, nothing was done illegally or within our bylaw. But my question to probably Don, asking him, what is the whole, this motion is gonna do and how you be able to consult? And this is gonna stay within our city staff that working on internally? And do you have the time to do that? And what's the resources you need to do the, to do this? While we are dealing with so many file through Bill twenty-three and so many other uh, workload, and I think I remember correctly, last, last, uh, Agriculture Refer Committee, you came to us. You need an extension time on adding and implementing more policies. And this is another workload we're giving you. Can you please a little bit clarify and tell us for rural councillors, especially like, how are you gonna do that work? And what this is entail?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the question, councillor. Um, so yes, there, there will be some, uh, internal resources required to investigate this. At this point, we're, um, not looking to retain any external, uh, resources to support staff. But it will, it will involve, um, you know, contact with the, uh, the board, uh, OMAFRA at the provincial level. And it's, it's really focused around, uh, getting some guidance on that whole question around the farm practices, uh, issue that, that arose, uh, through this, through this incident. So, um, we're, we're able to do it. It's not a, it's not a significant, uh, workload issue at this point. Uh, we'll come back to, uh, committee and council, uh, with, with further, if there's further work, uh, required in terms of changes to the tree bylaw or, um, any, any further actions at, at that point to give you an idea in terms of the, the time required and how that would fit within the department's work plan.
Uh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanna make sure that we're not really wasting our resources on, uh, and asking another body to govern us because I think we're capable at the city of Ottawa. We have enough committees. And I think we have a very diligent rural councillor that we know what is right practice or not. But, Mr. Mayor, um, I'm gonna, I, I have no problem supporting the motion because we're all, but, a- after all, I'm speaking with the councillors, Cavan and councillor Menard, and we are, we are in the city of Ottawa, looking for the same resolution. And if this is something that's gonna help us, I'm, I'm okay with it. And I'm looking forward for the result that comes to report to ARAC and Environment Committee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor DeRus. Councillor Brown.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and certainly thank you to our colleagues who have amended the motion. I think this is very important to bring this item back to, uh, ARAC for review. And I look forward, as councillor Drew said, to the findings of that report that will be forthcoming. The one thing that I am concerned about, Mr. Mayor, and I did go on at length at committee, so I'll, uh, keep my comments short here. But we wanna make sure that the message is clear that the city of Ottawa is not coming after rural landowners, looking to restrict the rights that they have as property owners. One thing that I, I think this council needs to remember is that we are an agricultural city. Eighty percent of the city of Ottawa resides in one of the four rural wards. And tree clearing for farm-related practice is a normal farming practice. And it happens everywhere in the rural area. I'm not going to speak specifically to the subject lands at question because I think that's been, uh, resolved. And we have already have a staff report and memo on that. My concern though, Mr. Mayor, is mission creep for the tree bylaw. I wanna make sure that our rural landowners, particularly farmers, are protected. Back in two thousand and seventeen, when the tree bylaw was brought in, and as my comments reflect at the Environment Committee, Mr. Mayor, we lost hundreds, if not thousands, of acres of trees in rural Ottawa because landowners were concerned that they would lose the rights on their properties. And so to protect that value so they could continue to farm in the future, they went in clear cut. I wanna make sure, Mr. Mayor, and I wanna hear from city staff that this is not the intention that we're putting forward today.
Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. Certainly, uh, we, I think those of us who are around recall those discussions when the tree bylaw came into effect. And it does not currently apply to the rural area. And there is no intention at the staff level at this time to, uh, apply the, the bylaw to the rural area. The motion is also worded carefully in that the, uh, the Farming and Food Production Act, um, which is, you know, really the guiding principle that we have to abide by and informs many of our bylaws, uh, has to be kept in mind. So that will be, uh, you know, part of the investigation and the information gathering.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And, you know, Mr. Mayor, just to wrap up my comments, I do appreciate the intent of the motion and I, as councillor Drew has indicated, I have no issue with supporting the motion because more information is always better. What I do want to ensure, Mr. Mayor, is that rural Ottawa is protected. Because at the end of the day, you will find no better steward of the land than a landowner or a farmer. The value of land is not only what's on top of it, but what is underneath it. And we wanna ensure that we're not punishing landowners. We wanna make sure that we're encouraging agricultural production at a time that groceries are becoming more expensive for families. We wanna do everything we can to encourage local food production. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and certainly to our colleagues who are considering this motion and to the motioner and seconder for amending it to ensure that this does come back before ARAC. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brown. Councillor DeRush.
Merci, Monsieur le Maire. Thank you. Um, so I was very intrigued when I, I, I read the, um, the committee report and, um, the, um, the nod to the, to the tribunal. And when you look at the website of the tribunal and you look at its mandate, its core job is to protect the farmer from, um, from complaints, uh, from the neighbours essentially on their operations. And the intent there, obviously, uh, right across Ontario, is to ensure that we have food security, that we protect our farms, that we have, uh, a viable agriculture industry. Uh, so this is a tribunal. Uh, I heard staff say they're gonna check with them, I guess, for guidance. I guess I, I don't understand that. I mean, it, it, this is a tribunal that you would file a complaint. And this would be, um, I think litigated. If you look at all the cases that are there, most of the cases are the neighbours complaining about the operations of the farm. So, I mean, question to legal, is, is this a forum where we would get the kind of feedback that we're looking for? Or would we need to file a case with the tribunal so that they can properly, um, deal with it within their mandate, which I think is questionable at this point? Thank you.
Mayor, I've asked Stuart Huxley. Stuart is one of our senior legal councillors and head of our, uh, regulatory municipal, uh, practice group and to join us as, as he's kind of had carriage of this matter all along. So, Stuart.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Uh, with respect to the question, the board's jurisdiction, um, deals with normal farm practicing. But purpose of the board, uh, really is to, to resolve disputes between the legislation, the provincial legislation, and any municipal bylaw that conflicts with that, with that provincial legislation. And, uh, legals review in consultation with staff and with the, uh, the mover of the motion. Um, we, we don't see a conflict between the legislation and the municipal bylaw being the tree bylaw, such that it may not, uh, be the case where the board would take jurisdiction over this matter because there is no conflict. Two other reasons why the, that tribunal is, uh, presumably not, uh, the appropriate forum for this particular matter. Uh, as the councillor has indicated, it's normally for, uh, farmers to go to that tribunal to deal with issues where the bylaw is restrictive. And the exemption that, uh, the motion and the direction, um, speak to is going to be reviewed. The other issue is the board's decision on these matters are not determinative on the facts of this particular case. They may be persuasive, but it won't be determinative. And thirdly, the timing of a decision of the board would likely be at least a year out. And, uh, the, uh, issues that, uh, staff are dealing with at the planning level um, simply, uh, would be addressed before that, uh, period of time.
Thank you, and I appreciate the analysis. And, um, again, I, I have some, some difficulty with this. I, I don't think this is the form. I don't think the cases line up consistently with what we're looking to achieve here. Appreciate there's a lot of, uh, interest in this file. But, uh, if we're gonna go to a tribunal, I think it needs to be the right, uh, the right avenue. It doesn't sound like in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor DeRush. Councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Mayor. I, um, just want to, uh, comment, I've appreciated the, the, uh, comments from my, my colleagues today. That's helping me better understand this issue and some of the issues that their residents face and how this motion may or may not impact them. I wanna make sure I understand this correctly. We are, we are responding to the issue of the clear cutting that Taggart initiated. And what came out of that is this motion that we have before us this morning, as well as a direction that councillor Menard gave at, uh, the Environment Committee, which talked about updating the bylaw where you need to require proof before you actually start the clear cutting. And, um, while I have no issue with the motion before us this morning, I do wanna ask staff, um, first of all, clarification, the tree bylaw is under review and it will be coming back to committee at some point. Can you just clarify again for me when that will happen? The timelines?
Uh, thank you for the question, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, to your question, councillor, the, we received direction last year to bring forward amendments to the tree bylaw in terms of the diameter of trees, um, that are subject to the bylaw outside of the inner urban area. So that is the change, the only change that is, uh, currently, uh, planned for, for this year. So that is the, uh, the scope of that change that's coming.
Thank you. And I, I raised this specifically for this reason because we're focusing on clear cutting for agricultural purposes. I have no idea what other possible, I don't wanna call it a loophole because I do believe farmers clear cut their land for legitimate reasons. But this is the case that we're responding to. What could be the next case that does not cite agricultural reasons, which the bylaw permits? And so I think that it would be more appropriate to review the bylaw in full and not one specific clause here or there because I'm concerned about the next clear cutting that has nothing to do with agricultural purposes. It's my understanding, for example, that federal lands, maybe even provincial lands, don't need any type of permission or requirements, that if you want to clear cut on federal land within the city of Ottawa boundary, you don't need permission. You don't need to talk to local councillors. You don't need to talk to local community. And so I'm just concerned about the next time that has nothing to do with agricultural purposes. So do staff feel that this would be the more appropriate way to go with respect to the tree bylaw, rather than look at the clause that you just referenced?
Mr. Mayor, thanks for the question. I think staff would recommend that, uh, allow us to investigate this, report back. And at that time, if there's a, if there's a need for a, a broader review of the T, uh, tree bylaw, including, uh, other exemptions, that we, we look at it at that time and, um, you know, we take direction from, from council on priorities and what would need to move. But I, I think at this point, uh, the recommendation would be, uh, allow us to, you know, do the work on this piece and then we'll report back.
Fair enough. Okay. And I, I understand that with the uh, bylaw work plan that every member of council is, is invited to give input to, which the committee will ultimately approve later this year, that this could be something that members of council could give direction on. But I just wanted to point that out because as I'm reviewing both this motion today and, and the direction that councillor Menard gave at Environment Committee, I was thinking, okay, this is the environmental piece. What are the other potential, uh, ways that clear cutting could happen that we want to mitigate going forward? So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Brockington. Councillor Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and, uh, and thank you to councillor Drew for his, uh, his initial remarks on this because I, I think it is, uh, a fine line that we do walk as a rural councillor when we have discussions like this. Um, and I think that was reflected in, in my platform when I, when I ran to be the councillor for a rural ward. So I, I did talk a lot about protecting trees, uh, leaving more mature trees standing, particularly when we go in and develop lands. That's something I would like to see. But on the very top of my platform was, you know, having a, a strong voice for rural communities, protecting farms and, and farmers' rights and, and making it easier to, to run a farm, maintain your farm, even expand your, your farmable land. I don't have an issue with that. Um, but I do share the concerns of many, uh, amongst the public and, and some of my council colleagues among, about how the particular clear cut that spawned this conversation was, was handled and explained to, to the people of Ottawa. And, uh, you know, clear cuts of this magnitude can only happen in rural communities, just based on the, the nature of it. And so I'm, uh, I'm really happy, la- last night I, I did stay up later than I normally do, uh, just thinking about this conversation and, and how difficult it, it might be. Um, so I'm really happy that, uh, the mover and the chair of the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee were able to, to work together before, uh, coming to the table today to, uh, to make some changes that, uh, that will help, I think, keep that conversation, um, grounded in, and the reality for, uh, rural communities and farmers and their need to, to do those things. So I'm, I'm looking forward to being part of that conversation and I am appreciative that, um, councillor Kavanaugh has moved the motion to provide an avenue for that. Um, but I, I do wonder, and, and based on councillor DeRush's concerns and, uh, the concerns that were raised through legal, would the mover consider amendment to the motion to reflect those concerns? Perhaps there's a different way to, to, to look, to explore this as a council.
Councillor Kavanaugh, did you wanna speak to that?
Rather than sending it to the tribunal, could, could that part be avoided?
I think I need to defer to staff because they put the motion together with me. And, um, I think they had a reason for doing that. So, uh, I think I'd defer to, uh, to Mr. Huxley.
I'll, I'll just say I'm generally supportive of the motion. I'm just looking for ways that maybe.
There was a reason for it and, um, uh, I'd rather have them speak on that.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, uh, staff, uh, from the Planning Department and legal staff have reviewed the motion and are supportive of the wording, uh, in the, uh, in the resolution.
And if I could clarify, at this point, it's, it's not going to the tribunal for adjudication. We're looking into the matter.
Fantastic. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you for moving the motion, councillor Kavanaugh. Thank you for your work on it as well, councillor Drew, and I'm gonna be supporting the motion.
Thank you, councillor Kelly. Councillor Tierney.
Great. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I wanna thank, um, uh, councillor, uh, DeRus and ARAC. I actually, I, I grew up, my grandfather was a farmer, so I cleaned the stalls quite a bit and I have a, a wee bit of knowledge about it, uh, from that perspective. Uh, that being said, um, I did have one question. We spent several hours, eleven members of the committee, talking about this. And there was discussion about signing a non-disclosure agreement to see who's actually gonna operate the farm. Uh, did anyone take you up on that, Mr. O'Connor? Oh, Mr. Huxley, apologies.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I would defer to the general manager of, uh, planning and economic development. I believe that, that, that issue lies with.
Yes, yes. The, the memo indicated, uh, and, and we, we consulted with, uh, legal and Mr. O'Connor on this, but we provided the opportunity, um, for councillors to come to my office to view the documentation that was, uh, uh, subject to commercial con, you know, confidentiality. And, uh, uh, one councillor has taken advantage and I believe four or five are planning to come, hopefully after council, if it ends at a good time today.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. That's all I have today, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Tierney. Councillor Luloff.
This is, uh, just a couple of facts. I mean, I, I dug, uh, I dug into this a little bit after, after committee as well and, and reached out to the landowners, uh, to learn a little bit more about the history of this piece of property. Uh, it was indeed farmed, uh, for, for agriculture. And the woods that were cut down were planted. It was a monocultural tree farm. So it's not like this was, you know, a clear cut piece of pristine bush that had been, you know, that had grown naturally. This was a tree farm, um, that was cut. So I think that, um, returning a piece of land that was used as agriculture to an agricultural purpose, it's zoned as such, is probably a good farming practice when we're in the middle of a food crisis. Um, groceries cost, uh, an outrageous amount. Um, having, uh, farms close to home, uh, I think is a good thing. I, I'm not certain that this needs to be referred, uh, anywhere, that this matter needs to be referred. We've heard from staff that, uh, it didn't break any bylaws. Um, we do have the availability of this document to see that this is going to be farmed. I don't think that there's anything untoward here. Um, so thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor Luloff. Councillor Kits.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I was unfortunately unable to attend Environment Committee when this was discussed, uh, but I did follow it along. And, um, you know, I do, I do have some big feelings about, uh, what we're discussing today. As many of you know, prior to the ward boundary changes, uh, these lands were located in Ward nineteen and they now are located in Ward twenty. Um, and it's, it's really, for me, the lack of communication with the surrounding community and councillors i- is what I took issue with here. In, in my view, it was unacceptable and, uh, unfair to the residents of Carlsbad Springs. They are stakeholders in this project as well and, um, deserve to be informed when this kind of significant activity is happening in their backyards. Um, and as Taywin moves forward, that communication is gonna need to be, it's, it's absolutely essential. Um, you know, the developer has acknowledged that. Um, and it's a matter now of ensuring that that doesn't happen again going forward. So in that forward-thinking spirit, I do appreciate this motion. Um, but I agree with my rural colleagues and I wanna thank councillor Brown for his comments because I don't think I could have said them better myself. But there is an exemption, uh, for agricultural purposes for this reason. And I'm glad to have that clarity from staff that we aren't looking to change that because we do need to encourage local food production. We need to support and celebrate our agricultural community. Um, and we need to appreciate the value of farmed land. It's a different kind of value than treed land, but it's a value all the same. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Kits. Okay, I don't see any other hands up. So, uh, is the motion carried?
Sir, it's sent on the first, therefore be resolved. Thank you.
Okay, noted. Okay, thank you. Uh, let's move to item fourteen point four. Um, and I understand that, uh, there is a motion from councillor Gower. Councillor Gower.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you councillor Curry for being the seconder on this. Where is the Ottawa International Airport Community Improvement Plan, Y O W C I P, supports the development of the Ottawa Airport lands and provides both direct and indirect economic benefits to the city of Ottawa and to the local business community? And where is the Y O W C I P was intended to help kickstart development projects near the airport in order to generate new lease revenue, to mitigate the ongoing effects of the COVID nineteen pandemic on travel and tourism, and to allow the Ottawa Airport to effectively compete with airports in other Canadian and North American municipalities? And where is the Ottawa International Airport Community Improvement Plan allows for tax increment equivalent grants of up to twenty-five years, while many city of Ottawa CIPs have a maximum grant period of ten years? And where is the applicant, H A C Ottawa Airport L P Germain Hotels, has indicated via a letter to the mayor dated April sixth, twenty twenty-three, that they would accept a ten-year grant period? And where is the applicant's grant would total approximately three point seven four million over a ten-year grant period, while the city's net property tax municipal portion would total one point two million over the same period and thirteen point seven million over twenty-five years? Therefore, be it resolved that the report recommendations be approved as amended as follows. One, approve the grant application submitted by H A C Ottawa Airport L P Germain Hotels in respect to ten eighty-five Airport Parkway Private in accordance with the Ottawa International Airport Community Improvement Plan, not to exceed three million, seven hundred thirty-seven thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars over a maximum period of ten years, subject to the establishment of and in accordance with the terms and conditions of a community improvement plan agreement. And two, delegate authority to the general manager of Planning, Real Estate and Economic Development to finalize and execute an Ottawa International Airport Community Improvement Plan Agreement with H A C Ottawa Airport L P, establishing the terms and conditions governing the payment of a grant for the development of ten eighty-five. for the development of ten eighty-five Airport Parkway Private to the satisfaction of the general manager of planning, real estate and economic development, the city solicitor and the chief financial officer. Bit more context, I hope the motion does speak for itself. This is a significant change from the original recommendations that were before us at the finance committee last week. Uh, by way of comparison, the grant to the hotel would decrease from thirteen million to three point seven million. And the next net tax collected by the city would increase from four point three million to thirteen point seven million over twenty-five years. Um, you know, for the airport, we, we saw in the letter, I think everyone has received it and seen a copy for that. This is important to move forward on this hotel now. And this grant allows construction to begin now so that it can be completed in twenty twenty-five and avoid further escalation of construction costs. And as we heard many times at committee last week, it is a very important component of a hub airport and crucial to increasing the number of flights in and out of Ottawa. And, uh, allows the airport to continue its contributions to our local economy. Pre-pandemic, uh, that was contributions of two billion dollars in economic output in the city, which is a significant, significant portion of our city's overall GDP. Uh, so I hope that councillors will consider this change with, uh, an open mind today and look forward to the discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Gower. Um, there's a second motion as well from councillor Brockington, which I'm, I'm going to suggest that councillor Brockington introduces now if you're okay with that. And then we can, we can have discussion on, uh, both motions and we'll vote on them in order. Councillor Brockington?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. I'll just introduce it, my motion now. So whereas the Ottawa International Airport is a major economic contributor to the local GDP, estimated at two point one billion in twenty seventeen by WSB Canada, providing employment, wages and various services, and is based on direct, indirect and induced impacts. Whereas the same study calculated the number of jobs, both direct and indirect from the airport to be ten thousand, seven hundred seventy-six. Whereas at the April twenty-third committee meeting, uh, OIA CEO Mark LaRoche stated his vision to transition the airport into a hub that would ultimately attract more flights, more revenues and more amenities and offerings. Whereas when the OAA was considering to lease ten acres of land on Hunt Club Road, covered in red pine plantation for a car retailer resulting in strong community pushback, city council approved a motion by councillors Brockington and Deans on the twenty-third of February twenty twenty-two, motion seventy-two sixteen requesting the following, quote, "That a delegation of council comprised of the mayor or his, or his delegate, one of the co-chairs of the planning committee, the ward councillors, deans and Brockington, meet with the city's nominees to the board of the airport authority to express council's concern with proceeding with tree cutting before further negotiations on the future of the red pine forest are completed," end quote. And whereas the meeting request was never fulfilled, whereas MP David McGinty has suggested on multiple occasions for the airport to meet with the abutting community to share their vision and strategic outlook, to facilitate greater understanding and awareness and to promote open and constructive communications. Whereas city council would benefit from a similar presentation to understand the airport's twenty eighteen master plan, any modifications to it since its approval, current vision for growth and ways to collaborate going forward. Therefore be resolved that the mayor write to CEO Mark LaRoche and board chair Code Kubit encouraging them to work with the local councillors Bradley, Brockington and Druze to organize a public session on the airport's long-term plans for growth. And be it further resolved that the mayor invite the Ottawa International Airport CEO and board chair to update the finance and corporate services committee. And the frequency has been changed in this motion to now read at least once per term of council on the airport's performance, growth updates and ways for the city and airport to work more collaboratively together. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Brockington. Uh, so, uh, it's open now to discussion and questions on either motion. Councillor Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And let me start by saying, first of all, what I'm about to say, I know you know, and I know you support economic development. So let me start with that. So airports drive economic development. Economic development then drives city revenues and an increase in city revenues then drives our ability to pay for things like affordable housing, infrastructure, supports, programs and services, all the things we want to pay for. So that's, that's the flow. So we all, I think, understand that. And I think there's a lot of support on this council for the health of our airport. I've heard that over and over again. I think this file comes down to a difference between those who support a sure thing, take the deal right now, and those who believe that if we hold out, we'll get an even better deal because the hotel will be built regardless of the tax incentive. We know door number one, door number two is unknown, and it's a hope. I never think hope is a strategy, but if this vote fails, I hope those who are going with the unknown behind door number two and vote against this are right. I hope you're right because if you're right, this will be good for the city. But if you're wrong, there's a lot that will have been lost that could have been good for the city. As a city councillor for Canada North, I see it as my job to make sure everyone in this city understands why both our Canada Tech Park and our international airport were designated and approved by the province in our official plan as special economic districts. The Canada North Tech Park has over five hundred and forty tech companies bringing in thirteen billion of Canada's GDP every year. Its companies employ tens of thousands of Ottawa residents. Just in case some are not aware, ninety percent of the business in the tech park is international. The employees in the tech park represent almost every country in the world. Many of the tech companies, the largest tech companies in the tech park are international companies. I have a, a little diagram that if it's put up, might be helpful to you all. International companies like Nokia and Ericsson chose Ottawa and the tech park because it's a technology hub. The federal government, it seems every other week, announces new funding to support economic development in the tech park. The federal government just announced funding to support a biomedical company, Evic Diagnostics, and then Ranivus to kickstart Canada's semiconductor industry right in our own special economic district. Geopolitical challenges being solved right in our city's tech park. Our tech park is the second largest tech park in North America. The largest is Silicon Valley. But let me show you the difference in our airports. And so the diagram, sorry, that's going up, will show you a picture of our airport and how many international flights we have. You see that one over there to France. And then you see the one from San Francisco, which is completely different. And that is the largest tech park in North America and ours is the second largest. And the difference is shocking. We have a problem here in Houston. The economic prosperity of our tech park relies on international connectivity. In order to get more international flights, our airport authority has to buy the international flights. Their revenue stream to buy those flights will come from the lease revenue they would get from the new intermodal hotel. The tech park companies need the international flights. Our economic development staff, the Board of Trade, Invest Ottawa, Ottawa Tourism, the Airport Authority and the Mayor's Table on Economic Development all advocated for this special community improvement program because of its connection to economic development. The details of our CIP listed a hotel as a project that would bring in revenue to the airport so that it can buy the flights and create a hub that would benefit tourism, the city, its residents with all of the increase in revenue to the city. However, the city will also benefit because of the increase in passenger volume too. For every passenger that gets off a flight and then on another flight, because we, we will then be a hub, the city will get two dollars and sixteen cents per passenger. On top of that, the higher passenger volume will increase the money to the city through the property in lieu of taxes, the pilt that the airport pays to the city. And the city will get a significant increase in property tax now that the vacant land, which is taxed very low, will be re- designated as a commercial property and taxed much higher. Some of you are willing to risk losing an amazing deal for the city. I and the companies and employees of the tech park, Invest Ottawa, the Ottawa Board of Trade, Ottawa Tourism, the Airport Authority and our very own City of Ottawa Economic Development staff, who have worked for years on this deal, think this is an amazing opportunity to support and increase economic development right in front of us, right now. And I am with them. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Curry. Councillor Menard.
Thank you so much, uh, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate this. And, uh, obviously we've had good, robust discussion about this, uh, in the public and, and obviously at Fedco, um, as well. I'll just say on, on the, um, uh, councillor Gower motion uh, and the change by the hotel, um, just recently in the last week, I, I don't think anything could make a better case that this hotel tax break is not warranted than the change that is being suggested here today. Because just one week ago, we heard arguments that ten million dollars more was needed for this to go ahead. And in fact, we had a lot of councillors around the table willing to forego that taxpayer, those taxpayer dollars, that extra resident money. But we're finding out here today that it wasn't needed after all. And I think this is the issue of why this council has wisely said that SIPs need to be reviewed, the criteria needs to be reviewed as is the brownfield criteria because of the exact situation that we're in today. I, I wish that that review, um, would come back sooner rather than later because I think we're going to get into these pitch battles regularly with these things coming to council. And I mean, my, my motion spoke to that previously about how we should get this review done and then come back with an agreement of council, how we move forward with this type of incentive program. I think if international flights are the issue, then let's work on international flights. A tax break to the hotel is not going to do that. And you know how I know that? Because three other hotels are currently leased by the airport. They bring economic development and they did it without a municipal taxpayer grant. They are not happy about this and they've sent a letter opposing this. And quite frankly, residents of Ottawa aren't happy about this either. Our public doesn't want this. It's clear when you listen to them in public forums, they are not happy about this. So I think the city could not really have done a better job to ensure that, you know, billions were spent on light rail to make sure that we could get out to that spur line, which the airport and the federal government, which is the purveyor of airports, the federal government's responsible, not us, to get that spur line connected with our multi-billion dollar LRT. So I think this motion makes the case that we were making a committee, that this was not needed in the first place, that we were going to spend ten million more of taxpayer dollars than we are here today. And this last minute change, I think, makes that case. I do have a question to staff, Mayor. And it's, it's when, when is the SIP review and the brownfield review supposed to come back? I assume to Fedco at this point or to a finance committee?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. Uh, councillor, as indicated at committee, uh, Q two, we're looking at June coming back to a finance committee.
Okay, that's appreciated. Um, I guess so I just suggest, Mayor, in closing, that, that councillors vote against, uh, the Gower, uh, motion, that that, uh, be voted down and vote against the, uh, report as a whole, which has come here in that six-six tie at committee. Um, that this taxpayer grant is, is not warranted in this case and we can better spend that money in this city on other priorities that will increase economic development, that will benefit our residents greater than what we're seeing here, uh, today. So thanks for the discussion and I hope councillors do vote down that Gower motion and then vote down the subsequent recommendations from committee. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Menard. Just to be clear, we're just voting on the motion because the, uh, the, what arose from committee was, was, uh, ended in a tie. So we just, we're just voting on the Gower motion and on the Brockington motion.
Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Everybody's clarity. Do you want to speak to that? Can, can you clarify on that?
Mr. Mayor, to clarify, there is no committee recommendation because the matter lost on a tie. So as you noted, it is, uh, councillor Gower's motion that is before council now to put the original staff recommendations on the floor would require a different motion.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Lulov.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I could give you all the economic reasons why we should support this, like the city's going to be up now with this motion, thirteen million dollars over the lifetime of the agreement. City will accrue most of the same amount in fees, uh, well, the, the previous amount, uh, in, in fees alone immediately. The airport will use this rent to buy airline traffic that will dramatically increase the amount of tax that we collect in perpetuity, but you've heard those arguments from, from councillor Curry, very well stated. And you'll hear those arguments from, from more of our colleagues, I'm sure, today. But instead, what I'm going to do is focus on, you know, the, the disingenuous and entirely fallacious arguments being used. Maybe today I can help some of you find your inner Chomsky as I provide a very cursory crash course in intellectual self-defense using this item as a case study. I've heard some people say, uh, that, uh, they're on the side of taxpayers on this, that we should not be using taxpayer money to support private business. This is a classic definist fallacy. The person making the argument expects that the listener is going to accept the provided definition, making the argument difficult to refute. The airport is a taxpayer too, and in fact, they pay millions of dollars in taxes every year to the city. And by using money that they would be granted back, money that they, not anyone else, has paid to the city, they'll be able to increase the amount of taxes that they pay to us. And in fact, this is a quadruple fallacy as it sets up a straw man argument, a false dilemma, and uses the no true Scotsman fallacy to, whether intentional or not, vilify any member who supports a CIP. Because of course, those who don't support taxpayers, you know, couldn't possibly support the CIP. What tripe? I support this application because I support taxpayers. Don't fall victim to another fallacy, appeal to emotion, wishful thinking, which is arguing for a course of action by the listener in, uh, uh, according to what might be pleasing to imagine rather than according to evidence or reason. This hotel is likely not going to be built anymore. Inflation and supply chain pressures make this project too expensive. These are facts. Don't fall victim to appeal to wealth or ad hominem. This is not a luxury hotel. In fact, the per night stay at the alt is below average for all hotels in Ottawa, coming in at about a hundred and eighty dollars a night, which is under the two hundred and fifteen dollar average as listed on Kayak. Uh, don't make it, uh, about who's applying, uh, but the strength of the application, which by the way, meets every single criteria that this council passed seven months ago. Is this a hard application to support? Only if you underpin your arguments with intellectually lazy and disingenuous fallacy because this opposition is built on a massive house of cards. We're going to cut off our nose to spite our face today, leaving millions and millions of dollars on the table in future taxes paid by businesses. But what good is a nose anyway if we can't even see beyond it? If you want to keep residential property taxes low, set the conditions to see business flourish in our city. They pay taxes too. And the larger share, the larger the share that they're paying, the more affordable living here is going to be. So if we keep laying out the only tools that we can legally use, if we keep rolling out the red carpet only to pull it out from underneath applicants that meet every single criteria, we send a signal that Ottawa is not a good place to do business. So now, before I fall victim to the slippery slope fallacy, I'll wrap my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Lulov. Conseilleur plant.
Oui, merci. Ma question, c'est pour le staff. Est-ce qu'il y a?
I have a question for the personnel. Is there any requests for affordable housing in this, in this, uh, document? And this request?
Uh, thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. There, there is no, uh, link or provision for affordable housing attached to this, uh, particular application.
So I would like to know, is there any flexibility? Could we have, let's say, one floor for refugees that are arriving through the Ottawa Airport? Maybe that it can be used by, uh, the border services to triage people coming in?
Uh, I'm not sure. Do you repeat the question?
I would like to know if the, if it's possible to have one floor or some rooms within the hotels for refugees that are arriving through Ottawa Airport so that, uh, border services can actually do the sort out of all the, the refugees coming in?
Uh, thank you for the question, Mr. Mayor. I think that would have to be a discussion, uh, that would have to take place with the hotel in terms of, uh, you know, their willingness. There's no, um, current mechanism, uh, where the city could, uh, require that.
Merci conseilleur plant. Uh, councillor.
Thank you so much.
I thank you very much, uh, Mr. Mayor. I do find it very unfortunate the way that things have rolled out on this application. We, as a council, had an opportunity to pause the CIP program early on on our mandate, like we did on the brownfields program. But we didn't. Instead, there's been a review of the program ongoing by staff, but we did not give direction to staff to pause it. So while we talk about respect for taxpayers' dollars, we should also be looking at our behavior. We let staff continue to work on this program, promote this program and receive and review applications. We let the applicant go through the entire process of the application. This were a CIP program that was approved by council only in July of last year, of which ten of you here today approved. Hotel was one of the twenty-one categories that was approved. The only exemption was made for the type of business was a payday loan company. Today's vote was supposed to be about the application itself, and we have definitely heard comments from my colleagues on the application. But many of the comments I've heard around the table have to do with the CIP program. That people don't like these type of financing models, that the program should not exist, which are valid opinions, but those comments should have been contemplated during a program review stage and not in the context of reviewing the application. So while I not, will not be supporting the application today, although I do believe we have a role. So while I not, will not be supporting the application today, although I do believe we have a role to play in economic development. I desperately do want to see this hotel developed. It would be an excellent addition to the airport. I want improved service. I flew out of Montreal for my last vacation and will be flying out of Montreal for my next one. I do, however, agree wholeheartedly that in a time where one out of seven residents in Ottawa is experiencing food insecurity and where affordable housing is in desperate needs, it isn't timely to be giving a tax break to a successful Canadian company. And I do have listened to the concerns of the taxpayers. And I will not be supporting the application, but I do think we have a few questions to answer as a council in short order, before we continue down a path of council members undertaking program review and evaluation, when we are supposed to be reviewing individual applications. Questions we should be asking ourselves and in short order. Will we continue to receive applications for the CIP programs or will we pause the programs while we wait for the review? How will we support the designation of the airport as a special economic district in the official plan that was recently approved by the provincial government if we don't have this program? What other levers do we have to support economic development in our special districts? And I'd just like to add, before I do vote, know that I am apologetic to the way that this has rolled out. But I would, and I also just have one question with respect to the Brockington motion. I'm wondering how local counselors are defined with respect to the airport. The airport's designated in the official plan, uh, as a special district, but there's a motion, uh, which part of it is only the local counselors will be involved in this meeting. So is it only those that live close to it that would be involved? Uh, I think we need to be careful in, um, how we couch counselor participation in activities. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Carr. Counselor Brockington, did you want to respond to that?
Mayor, I'm going to speak and I'll address, uh, my colleagues' comments at that point.
Okay, Counselor Dudas?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some have asked why there's a SIP program at the airport in the first place. And what business is it of the cities to help the airport if it's struggling? I think this is at the crux of the conversation that we're having here today. It's a very important question about this grant. The Ottawa Airport Authority does not pay property taxes in the same way that residents do. They pay it in pills, payments in lieu of taxes to the city. While several factors go into this, quite simply, for every passenger that goes through the airport, the city has paid $1.08 as a tax. Pre-pandemic, this accounted for over $5 million every year. Last year, that number was cut in half, and in 2021, it was only slightly over $1 million. This drop in revenue for the city is substantial. Up until this year, the province and the federal governments have been making Canadian cities whole and filling those budget gaps. However, both the Ontario government and the federal government's 2023 budgets stopped doing this. That means that all of the financial shortballs must now be covered by us as a municipality, and we must either choose to raise property taxes or cut services. In the case of airports, many cities opted to support their quick recovery and fought to attract new and returning routes by making direct financial transfers. I'll give Edmonton City Council as an example, which made a direct transfer to their airport monies that were collected from residential property taxes of nearly $10 million. They were not alone. Many Canadian cities took this approach to try to help make their airport more competitive in the scramble for routes. Ottawa, however, opted to introduce a SIP plan. Rather than rely on a bailout, the CIP plan offers tax increment equivalent grants for approved projects. And I know that there's been lots of conversation about what that actually means and what it does, so I won't go into that today. But I think there's a lot of value in having an educational component, not just for council, but for our communities as to what it actually does and how it is not taxpayer dollars. If you were to visit the airport today, you would see just how much they're struggling with flights. I took the opportunity to look at yesterday and just how many flights were coming in and out. There was less than 70 flights and half of those were going to Toronto, were basically a shuttle bus for the airport in Toronto. While there are a little more than a dozen international flights to the US and Mexico, there was now only a single route flying out of Ottawa that travels off the continent, and that is the Air France route that's running five times a week to Paris. That's it. It's all we've got. When discussing the CIP grant application, some argue that an airport hotel may eventually get built in those 25 years. And if that happens, the city will collect the full property taxes. So why don't we just wait it out? They would be completely correct about the hotel specific taxes, however, they would be ignoring the litany of other taxes that are collected at the airport and that actually benefit our residents and our city coffers. This year, the city passed Budget 2023 that included in it a 2.5% property tax increase. This increase added roughly $100 to each homeowner's bill. This was the equivalent to roughly 96 people traveling through Ottawa Airport. Pre-pandemic, 5 million passengers flew out of our airport, with 400, 427,000 of those traveling outside of Canada or to the US. In 2022, only 2.9 million flew, with only 93,000 of those leaving Canada and the US. As the province is no longer covering this difference, the city will now have to decide whether to raise taxes equal to simply cover the cost in passenger flights or to cut services. The airport authority wants the internal terminal hotel with a skywalk right into the terminal building, as it will receive monthly, monthly rent for this property, which it will then use to buy international flights from the major carriers. They had to pair it, pay Air France for the direct flight to Paris. In order to buy more, they need the lease money they will get from this hotel and other applicants through the SIP program. What many do not know is that cities all compete to have their airports become hubs, because hub airports bring in more passengers. When a passenger has a layover, they get, they get off the plane, then they get back on the plane. They don't even have to leave the airport. That counts as two trips, and the municipality, our municipality, we actually get $2.16 for that one passenger. As you can imagine, those transactions build up quickly and become quite substantial. And that is why turning our airport into a hub would bring in so much more money for our city and for our taxpayers. I share all of this information because this conversation is so much more about a hotel getting a tax break. We opted as a city not to bail, bail out the airport. But if this grant program dies, no one in Ottawa should be surprised if that conversation is that, that's where that conversation turns to. Because it's already happened in multiple Canadian cities. And at this point, it would be an attempt to catch up to those airports, but realistically, they have a head start and they have already been confirming flight routes. Edmonton Airport, which I referenced just a moment ago, saw 109% growth in passenger volume from 2021 to 2022. And at 2.7.2 million passengers forecast for 2023, they're already approaching their pre-pandemic passenger levels. As this loss in revenue becomes permanent, the city will have to look to other sources of revenue, and that will include money from our taxpayers. This has not been part of the discussion today, and I absolutely wanted to take my time to stress this point, because if we're going to vote a specific way on this CIP, we need to be very honest and upfront with not only ourselves, but also our residents.
Thank you, Counselor Dudas. Counselor Lowe?
Thank you, Mayor. A quick question about the Brockington motion. Um, I note that in the first, I think it's the first operative clause that says, uh, that the mayor write to, uh, the CEO and encouraging the work with counselors Bradley Brockington and DeRus. Um, I do note that, uh, Counselor DeRush is actually the southern neighbor of the airport, so, uh, um, if, if, if Counselor, I guess, DeRush, DeRus and Brockington are all, uh, willing, would we, uh, can we maybe switch them around in the motion to so it's the actual neighbor?
Uh, Mayor, the intent is to invite local counselors, and so the names aren't as important as the objective, and that is the local counselors work with the airport. So I'm very open to, to Counselor, um, uh, Carr's point as well. It, it really is, if this passes, working with counselors in this southern area to work on a session with the airport. So it's not restrictive to the three mentioned.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lowe. Counselor DeRash?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I speak to you today as a neighbor of the airport for over 20 years, along with residents of Finley Creek and Riverside South. Uh, and living next to the airport is very much, uh, like living next to, uh, a big elephant, as the saying goes. The entire South Gloucester area is defined by the airport in terms of the location of the homes, uh, because of the invisible, uh, noise, noise contours that define the growth in the south end. And the airport shares with us a vast transportation, uh, network that is under massive pressure. Uh, residents accept, I think, that we, we live in this zone. In fact, their deeds make it very clear that you're in the airport operating zone, and that is a fact of life. Uh, and, and if just a few weeks ago, I found myself advocating for the airport as a key economic area, and I do support that, but with the right tools. Um, I am new to this file and was not part of the previous decision to open the door to the CIP. So I do think that I, uh, have that liberty, have that privilege to have a fresh look at this particular case. At the time of the decision, I tell you, I had reservations, because we do have employment lands in South Ottawa, Ottawa that I think are much more deserving candidates, uh, for a CIP, and I'll speak about that. Uh, so my position today is based on, uh, a few points. The first is my view that the city's first job to support businesses is providing the infrastructure. Um, we have had considerable work done, um, uh, in, in the, uh, the, the area, uh, in terms of growth. And, uh, we best support that in terms of the employment and the business lands by providing the infrastructure that's essential to their day-to-day delight. I was disappointed, along with several other counselors, uh, that as part of this budget process, that we put a question mark over the airport Parkway. And, uh, that decision was a long time ago, but I think it was, uh, I think a setback for, um, the residences and businesses of South Ottawa, including the airport. So I do have concerns with that, and I think the residents of Riverside South are rightly saying, if the airport's going to grow and we're going to grow, then the infrastructure needs to grow with that, and I think that is a fair point of view. Um, I would add, I think we're doing a pretty good job of helping the airport by providing future customers. We've seen tremendous growth in Riverside South and Finley Creek, and these are all people, businesses, uh, that will use the airport. And we've set some very ambitious targets to increase, uh, the housing growth, uh, in the area. Uh, my second concern is the incrementalism of, uh, the program. Um, I, I, you know, I really think that, that, that the focus of these programs should be on stubborn, um, economic areas that just really do not have the levers for economic, uh, growth. And I think we saw with this, uh, that the airport does have levers. They, the, the, the candidate that, that's put for the application, um, uh, seems to be saying that there's, they, they, they can, they can do more. And to me, um, I just don't think the incrementalism was satisfied in this particular, uh, project. And I say that, having spent several years with the Department of Agriculture, where we worked on export market development. And, um, you know, really those, these programs need to demonstrate that this last dollar is really what the tipping point is to making this happen. And I, and again, I don't think that it's been satisfied in this particular case. Uh, just around the corner, you've got, uh, the Leitrim LRT station, which I would argue is a, is a stronger case for a CIP. It's the ugliest duckling of stations that we have, because it's surrounded, um, by federal lands. It is a rural cross-section. Uh, it is on a dump. And I think this is, these are the areas that I think we should be looking at, Mr. Mayor, as part of that review, is those stubborn economic areas that just don't have the levers. Uh, and, and lastly, I'll say that I really believe this is a federal jurisdiction, um, and that really it's, that the, the federal government, it's their role to support, uh, the airports and ensure that they're viable, especially in these small markets like the city of Ottawa. And unfortunately, the payments in lieu of taxes system is, is broken. What other businesses, because of the pandemic, um, paid less while the city was providing the same level of service? So there's some real fundamental flaws, uh, in terms of how the cities are supported, in terms of the taxes that we collect from the federal properties, and I don't think we should gloss over that in any way. And I really do see this as a federal responsibility. I'll speak to the Brockington motion. I, I, I mean, I, I'm happy to assist in any way I can, but I really hope it's the federal, uh, leaders that we have in this area that should be stepping up, just like they are in the downtown core, and saying that we've got some responsibility here to manage, uh, this economic area in the downtown. I think the federal representatives need to do the same thing, uh, in South Ottawa. So in closing, uh, I have, I think, been a friend to the airport in the past, uh, through other tools. Uh, I supported their billboards, uh, at that time that were controversial, that brought them revenue. I've been a strong advocate for the North-South LRT from the beginning. Um, we moved the trade so space to, uh, to the south area by the airport, and I have the scars from that, that very Lansdowne debate. Uh, and I think it's helped, uh, the airport in that regard. And I supported infrastructure upgrades like the airport Parkway, uh, as part of this last, uh, last budget process. So I won't be supporting it, uh, in this case, and I look forward to the review that will be undertaken to see how we, again, better target the CIP program to deal with areas that really need, um, the help and, um, uh, like the area that I do suggest. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor DeRash. Counselor Troster?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Uh, I am unconvinced of the business case that's being made here. Uh, this is not a service or a business that's lacking the area. In fact, there are other airport hotels and that were not subsidized in any way by city council. And to me, this seems, this would represent unfair competition for those businesses. I understand, I agree with Counselor Carr, that we probably should have paused the, this program as part of our, our governance review, uh, because I've been hearing from many, many residents, whether it was, it's the Porsche dealership that, that received funding or a tax cut through this program in the last term of council or this hotel, uh, residents don't understand how this would impact the community positively. Um, while Hotels Romaine is not a publicly traded company, it appears that their yearly revenues are somewhere between 100 and 500 million dollars. To me, I could understand the financial case. Uh, for example, if you had a neighborhood that was a food desert that really needed a grocery store, I could understand using this tool in that case. Um, uh, if there were other unmet needs, downtown would love a hardware store. There isn't one in walking distance where most people live. Uh, medical services near seniors. But to me, another hotel, uh, at the airport, to me, it's a very tenuous connection that this would suddenly make the airport into a hub. Uh, I, I, I don't see the evidence of that. So I think that if this program is going to continue, uh, we need to really think about the businesses that we want to incent. Uh, also, I don't see how an airport hotel really does benefit the community. This is for folks who might come for a, a quick connection and get back on the plane the next morning. Again, it's a tenuous connection that this would lead to more international flights and therefore more tourism. We're already investing in the airport significantly by extending the North-South, South LRT, which I think is fantastic. Um, and also, I think this is financially irresponsible. We've lost hundreds of millions of dollars of revenue due to Bill 23. Now is not a time to be offering tax breaks to large corporations. Um, and I, I'll just end by saying, you know, I was really surprised to discover that with the exception of Ottawa Community Housing, nonprofit community housing providers, they pay property taxes. They do not get a break on their top property taxes, and they are providing essential, desperately needed affordable housing. So I think if we are going to offer grants of this nature, we need to be really, really specific. And so, um, you know, I, I, staff did their job in this case, just like they did with the Porsche dealership. Technically speaking, this meets the requirements of the program, but I think it's a program we need to pause, we need to review, and that we have no business subsidizing extremely wealthy corporations with taxpayer money. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Troster. Counselor Hill?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The airport hotel CIP program is an opportunity to invest in our economy. Economic growth is the engine that creates prosperity in this city. Ottawa is estimated to grow by half a million people over the next 25 years, and the jobs in our public sector are not going to keep pace. We need a strong private sector in order to provide the good-paying jobs that will make our city more livable. In Barhaven West, I cannot move towards the OP vision of 50-minute communities without a significant growth in good-paying jobs. We need good employment in our suburbs and opportunities like this airport hotel CIP to incentivize economic development are key. In addition to the Canada Tech Park advantages, which were spoken to so well by my council colleague, Nupien has a 10-kilometer stretch of Highway 416 that is ripe for economic growth. Having a strong and healthy airport is one of the key aspects of attracting business to our city, and we need to be competitive lest we lose those opportunities. Increased business flights and tourism means an increase in external dollars being spent in our downtown and across our city. I want my daughters to be able to afford rent or a mortgage in this city. We've said many times that we live in an affordability crisis. Having levers at the city level to incentivize growth that would not naturally occur is a huge asset. In this specific case, we have the opportunity to support our airport's growth, a program which all of the key stakeholders support, the Board of Trade, Tourism Ottawa, our own economic planners. The economic advantages to our city are not political, they are reality. The problem is that the public narrative has been skewed. This is not city taxpayers paying off a corporation. It is not that at all, and perpetuating this false equivalency is harmful. This is offering a reduced tax rate in order to incentivize growth that wouldn't otherwise happen. That's it. That's all. No taxpayer money investments. This program pays for itself. This program protects taxpayers, because it generates revenue that would not otherwise be created. We end up ahead. This program is a winner for the city and our taxpayers. Other municipalities across Canada have supported their airports. It's not an uncommon practice. Economic growth like this creates opportunity for increased city programming. I want to see investments in infrastructure upgrades, generators for multi-story apartments, road surfacing, transit reserves, affordable housing. generators for multi-story apartments, road surfacing, transit reserves, affordable housing options, and so on. But to not take advantage of economic growth opportunities in order to accomplish this growth means that we need to increase the tax rate to pay for it. Denying this opportunity for airport growth is a bad policy decision for the long-term prosperity of the economy of the city. Governments at all levels have a long track record of coordinating with private entities in order to enhance their communities. It's nothing to shy away from. We're all part of the same ecosystem, and we need to work together in order to grow our city to its full capacity. I strongly encourage my colleagues to support this hotel investment and the opportunities that come from the CIP program. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Hill. Councillor Kits.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I did speak at length about why I supported this at committee and have so since. But I wanted to try and simplify my argument today. So if this is approved today, the city will collect 13.7 million over the next 25 years guaranteed and 1 million thereafter. Plus 3.7 million in permits and fees, plus 30 million in local construction investment, plus revenue collected from the municipal accommodation tax. That's a guarantee. But if we just stick with that 17.4 million from property taxes, permits and fees, if you vote in favor of this today, it's guaranteed money in city coffers over the next 25 years that we can use to invest in infrastructure, in housing, in transit, the list goes on. If it's rejected, we are guaranteed nothing. So you're gambling with 17.4 million in taxpayer dollars. And, you know, like any fun night at the casino, when you make a bet, you have a chance at winning. We might get 17.4 million plus that extra 3.4 million. But we might get nothing. So, you know, for everyone saying that they know that the hotel is going to be built anyway, I don't know how you know that. But I balk at it because we have both the airport and the hotel group saying that that's not at all certain. And the experts on economic development in this city, our own economic development staff, but also the Ottawa Board of Trade, Ottawa Tourism, the tech leaders, they are saying, take the deal. They see this as critical to the economic development of our city. So if the headline was council rolls the dice on 17.4 million of your tax dollars, do you think residents would have something to say about that? I do. I really do. That's why I supported it. And the reason that this airport CIP was created is because the airport came to the city and said, we need your help recovering from the pandemic, like so many businesses. But the reason the city of Ottawa has a specific vested interest in seeing the airport recover quickly and recover now is because we also collect a check from the airport. Over a dollar ahead for every passenger that either boards or gets off a flight at the Ottawa Airport. And if you're on a connecting flight, you're counted twice. And I've said these numbers before, but in 2019, pre-pandemic, the city of Ottawa received a check from the airport for 5.5 million dollars for that passenger fee. In 2021, it went down to 1.4 million dollars, a 73% decrease. Again, this is money that we could be using. We need money now. The city needs money. So, you know, other midside cities, what they decided to do is they literally wrote their airport authorities a check. Edmonton, Regina, Halifax, Winnipeg. But I think the city of Ottawa was creative. We said, we're not comfortable using actual taxpayer dollars for this, but you know what we will do? We'll set up this incentive program. It'll attract economic development to the lands that you own. And, and that will be the city's contribution. So, you know, other councils across the nation recognize the value of the airport, the overall economic prosperity of their cities. And like my colleague was just saying, I think in Ottawa, unfortunately, the narrative on this has been co-opted. And I think we have something to lose here. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Kits. Councillor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back when the CIP was being discussed, I voted against it, and I will be voting against this motion today. I did vote against it because I was concerned, or rather not convinced, that it would be, it would improve or increase flights to Ottawa. There's many factors on what brings people to Ottawa and why direct flights would be better. First of all, we lost a lot, and everyone did, due to the pandemic. We're a government town. And more meetings were being done by Zoom. Zoom hurt us more than anything. And it continues to be there. So why come here? So that's, that's a big loss in volume. I was very interested to listen this morning on CBC Radio from the CEO, or former CEO, pardon me, of Air Canada, Duncan D, talking about he didn't think this would help. I felt that he had some more authority on this than I did, and he talked about how the airport authority needs to speak to airlines and convince them to have direct flights. We have made some gains, and I hope to see that continue. Most of the direct flights are related to federal government business, and I think the federal government needs to look into how to bring back things like meetings and conferences, et cetera. The other side conversation we need to look at is just to get away from how we get people here. We think in terms of airports is high-speed rail. That's something that we need to discuss for the future too, getting people to Ottawa. And that's something that we rarely talk about. What do you do when you come to a city? If you come by airport, what's your first impression? Well, with me, if they have great transit, if I can get from that airport to downtown, I'm impressed. And I've seen that in many cities. That's not what we're doing right now, and that concerns me. I think our investment in excellent public transit is very important. It's important for our, how people view us, not just visitors to conferences, but tourists and how they get around. So we do have a lot in this city, and I'm very proud of it. But we need to work on what makes us great as a city. And I don't think this hotel is it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kavanaugh. Councillor Brockington.
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Currie, in her opening remarks, talked about the West Coast, San Francisco, San Fran, Oakland, San Jose, 9.7 million people, Ottawa, 2.0 million in Eastern Ontario. San Fran Airport last year, 40, 42 million passengers went through that airport. Ottawa, 3 million. We're not comparing apples to apples here. San Fran is 5% or five times larger in population, 14 times larger in passenger count. They're a hub airport for United and Alaska. We've been told we're intellectually lazy this morning. We're arguing a micro-level piece, and we're not looking at the macro-level components of airport competitiveness. Airport rent, where are you Board of Trade? And Ottawa Tourism on airport rents in Ottawa and across Canada? Taxes on tickets are excessive in Canada. Where are you Board of Trade and Ottawa Tourism? We have very few international guests, tourists that come to Ottawa. They go to Toronto. They go along the 401 to Montreal, Niagara Falls, Quebec City. They don't come to Ottawa in any great numbers. Why not? Where are you, Ottawa Tourism, Board of Trade? American government subsidize some flights in America, so smaller markets still have access to transportation so people can travel. Do we do that in Canada, to the north or east coast or other rural areas? That could get people moving as well. And we've seen with the introduction of ultra-low-cost airlines in Canada, people who didn't travel before by air are now traveling because they can get those cheap tickets and visit family in these smaller markets where it's cheaper for airlines to land, cheaper fees. So these are macro-level issues that affect competitiveness that can get more people traveling, and we're arguing about a hotel grant. Where have we been on all these issues that contribute to the competitiveness of airports and contribute to higher costs for Canadians to travel within our country, down to the States or internationally? That's intellectually lazy to not fight the good fight on the big issues that are impacting airports in this city. I don't think SIP is the number one tool that we have for economic development. I think it's zoning. I think when we rezone land, we can take an underperforming piece of property and provide other opportunities for that property, and in many cases, automatically increase the value of that land. If there's demand for a ninth hotel in this area, build it with your own money. If there's truly demand for this hotel, where there is a financially viable case to support this hotel, then Germaine, go for it. As I said to the delegate at committee, I want you to come to Ottawa. I'm glad you have hotels in Ottawa. I want you to be in Ottawa for a long time, but please use your money to build your hotel. I do believe an economic argument can be made for either side. There will be economic benefits to our city if we provide this grant and the hotel gets built. And I do believe that if they choose not to build, but there is an economic case for a ninth hotel, someone will come in. Don't know the timelines, councillor, but that will come in because the market will dictate it. Mr. LaRush said in five years, there'll be two extra million passengers using our airport. And we know that there's a net increase in population in this city of at least 10,000 people per year. So when you have a federal government as our major employer that still can't get its act together and on our, our employees allowed to travel, are there going to be big conferences again? What those timelines are when we are the capital of Canada, when a lot of that should be happening in this city, that impacts us. They were a major component of passengers who were using the airport. Yes, it's a diverse mix of passengers. But who's having that conversation and all the other things I listed? So we can argue about the, the micro-level issues that impact our airport, and it's fair game to have that discussion today. But if we don't address the bigger issues that impact airports, we will never make any significant progress in this city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, just on a point of clarification, San Francisco's population is 800,000? Or 845,000, just to be accurate.
Yeah, I said the region of San Francisco, San Jose and Oakland. It's 9.7 million, the region.
So you're adding in other cities. But just to be, you know, councillor Brockington named me, so when someone names somebody, then you can, you have the right to clarify. So I'm clarifying.
Well, yeah, okay. I don't want to get into ruling on population size, but I think the, the San Francisco metro area is larger than Ottawa. Yeah, the population is larger. Anyway, doesn't matter. Yeah. Okay.
I did my research.
Okay. Councillor, thank you, councillor Brockington. Councillor Tierney.
Oh, boy, I got a follow-up on that one. All right. I'll keep it all above board and just get some quick facts out here. And first of all, when we were talking about, you know, this special district for the airport, this one's been a wrestling match for me because I truly believe the, the the CIP is to incentivize a business to build in advance of when they're not going to do it. And I think we've seen that in Bell's Corners, in Orleans, and localized CIPs. I truly support. I think there's a lot of opportunities based on merit. And that's why we actually have a final rubber stamp at the end of the day. The problem I have with this one is, you know, the incentive to build, I think, is already there. The, the other issue is, aside from the other eight hotels that are there, 800 meters from the door with a shuttle service still guarantees that you could stay at a hotel right next door for 30 seconds, so you can go stand in line for three hours at customs. It doesn't change anything. It's, this is part of the problem I'm having with this one. I, I think we were sold a bill of goods that we would find a way to be able to make us into an airport that, that would incentivize people to come here and change things, and I don't see a hotel doing that. The, the fact that when we were at committee, they were asking for a certain amount of money. The fact that they reduce the number, reduce the years, it's almost like they're cashing, you know, it's like coupons at a grocery store now. They're just looking for anything at this point. And frankly, they can afford to do it on their own. I, 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 you know, this is why we don't rubber stamp things. We have to look at everything in its totality. Take it to the bank. They're going to build this building. They're going to build this hotel with or without us. I'd rather see this money going to, if we actually do, and again, we've had a duly elected mayor that is committed to reviewing CIPs. I want to make sure they go to projects that are going to really help local communities. And I don't see that in this case. So for that reason, I will not be supporting the CIP today. And thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Tierney. Councillor Leaper.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I like the characterization that councillor Kits put on this earlier, talking about gambles. And, you know, there are no guarantees in this, and I'm going to lay my bets on the other side. In order for the gamble to pay off, you've got to make a couple of assumptions. The first of which is that the hotel would be around for 25 years. And that's a tenuous proposition. If you believe that that hotel needs a tax holiday of this small an amount in order to, in order to build. I believe that they'll build anyways. I agree with you, councillor Terry. They're going to build anyways if there is a market. If there is no market, the kind of grant that we're proposing making is not going to create that market. That hotel will not be here 25 years from now if there is no market. The other part of the gamble that needs to pay off is that having an airport hotel attached to the terminal is going to give the airport enough lease revenue to begin landing international flights. You got to pay to play, we're told. The amount of lease revenue that will come into the Ottawa Airport from having the hotel attached, from that incremental revenue is not going to land lift pans of flights. It's not going to land flights to London. It's not going to land flights to Singapore. If we want to play in that space, let's make that decision as a council, but we're going to have to make a much, much bigger bet. The ante is far, far higher than what we're talking about today. In international aviation and tourism, I think the amount of money that we're talking about is very, very small chips. We don't have big chips to play properly in this space. What we do have are the tools that councillor Brockington and that councillor DeRoch spoke about. Municipal tools that help to incentivize businesses, zoning, building infrastructure, the stuff that is our knitting. Those are the chips that we can throw on the table, and those are the gambles that we can make successfully. But I don't believe they're trying to play in, in these multi-million dollar spaces is this Ottawa Municipal Council's place to play. Folks, the amount of money that we're talking about may be relatively small in order to try to achieve the outcomes that we want. And I can't imagine that the amount of money that we're talking about is going to successfully fight those big market forces. But it is a lot of money to us. A 3.74 million dollar tax break over the course of the next 10 years is revenues to provide services to residents are going to have to be made up from the rest of the tax base. Right? Maybe the taxpayer is not cutting a check to the airport, but the taxpayer is sure subsidizing the airport. We have, we're going to go into next year with a closing balance in our transit operating revenue of, I believe, 8.9 million dollars, somewhere in that ballpark. That's not going to be enough for us to cover the operating shortfall that we're going to experience next year. A 300, sorry, a 3.74 million dollar tax holiday is real money when it comes to doing the things that municipal councils are supposed to be doing, which is providing services to the residents of Ottawa. If we can't afford to play in the big space, then let's work with our partners. Let's work with our allies. Let's work with other levels of government in order to do that effectively. But in the meantime, we need to stick to our knitting and make sure that residents of Ottawa get the services that we have promised them. So my gamble is on the other side. I'm laying my bet today. I won't be voting to support this CIP. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Leaper. Councillor Hubley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and well said, councillor Leaper. My question to this, Mr. Mayor, is we're hearing a lot about the link of this hotel application to bringing in more flights. And I think we need to get a little more information about what's being discussed there. If the position of those in support of this application believe it is the only way to get more flights coming to our airport, then I'd like to ask our staff in economic development, what happened to the money that was paid for all the international flights that came in here over the last decade? And then were abruptly canceled during the pandemic? Are they coming back, or are we going to repay for all those flights? And, and what assurance do we have that if we were to do this, to buy more international flights, that they're actually going to materialize and stay? So could I get an answer on that, please, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, her wire. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for the question, councillor. So I think that was, that might have been a question better posed to the airport, and there was discussion, you know, at committee on that point. I don't think staff can say, you know, in terms of any certainty, you know, whether flights will be coming back or not, our payment in lieu of taxes is based on passenger volumes. The more volumes, passenger trips, as we've heard, the more tilt that the city The more volumes, uh, passenger trips, as we've heard, the more tilt that, uh, the city, you know, gains as a result. So I'm not sure I'm answering your question exactly, but if, if you want to clarify, I'll do my best.
Uh, no, it sounds like, uh, we, we share the same viewpoint. I'm not seeing the direct link between this application and the increase in flights. And, and I'm not hearing anything about what happened to all the flights we already paid for. Are, are they coming back or do we repay for them? I, I was hoping that that would have been part of the background, uh, reporting, uh, that went into the report in support of this application. That we would have an answer on that.
Okay. So certainly, you know, the airport is, you know, they've indicated at, at the meeting that they're working. You know, they're, they're in contact with, uh, carriers trying to get those, uh, flights, uh, back, you know, to the city of Ottawa. They spoke of, you know, aspirations of creating a, a hub at the city and not that this application, uh, would do that, do that on its own. But they felt that this would be, uh, an important piece of a much bigger puzzle.
So the existing hotels, uh, when they were built and contributed towards, uh, routes to, you know, London, uh, Frankfurt, uh, Chicago. That money is all gone. So now we're going to start collecting again, and that's what it sounds like.
I think for the, the follow up, I don't think staff are in a position to comment on what, you know, the airport's revenue stream and, you know, where those funds were spent on the airport. I, I could not comment.
Okay, I, I appreciate that and I apologize for putting you on the hot seat with this, uh, Mr Herwire, but, uh, that was information I was looking for that I didn't see in the report. Okay, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Hubley, councillor Gower.
Yeah, can I wrap up?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, just some thoughts after hearing the discussion on this idea that because the hotel would be okay with the 10-year. Grant now means they didn't really need it previously. Well, we did have a CIP program that invited applicants to apply for it. So I don't think we can fault the hotel for applying for a grant that we offered. And I suppose we could look at it cynically and say, well, maybe their business case isn't really that, uh, in that dire straits. But remember the hotel, I think they told us a committee, pardon me, the airport has been looking for a hotel. To be a part of their strategic plan for the airport for seven years. And they do not have any other viable partners. This is the only one that's come to the table on the basis of the CIP tax incremental grant. This is intended to kickstart development around the airport. That's what the CIP is for. The hotel is a crucial part of the airport strategy to attract more flights, some more passengers, which is a benefit to us directly as a city. Um, there may be a market for a hotel, maybe five years from now, maybe 10 years from now. The whole point of the CIP is to help kickstart development now as part of recovery from the COVID pandemic and keep us competitive with other cities. Bigger picture, there are, are four things we can do as a council to help people in our city. We can make decisions to improve health and wellness. We can help improve access and affordability of housing. We can help to improve mobility. And we can help to secure better jobs and more jobs in our community. This application speaks directly to that last point, jobs and economic development. And, and all of these things are linked together. I mentioned earlier, the airport in 2017, this is the latest figures that they've published. Contributed 2.2 billion dollars towards the city's GDP. In that year, our total GDP at the city was 67 billion. So that means the airport contributed 3%. Roughly 3% of our city's entire economic output. So why is there so much attention here? Uh, why do we have a CIP here? Why is the airport area a special economic development zone? It's because with that, it would be in a, a pretty awful situation in our city in terms of economic health, in terms of jobs, in terms of prosperity in our city. Um, in Toronto, Richard Florida did a study just before the pandemic. Um, a respected city builder and, uh, person with a lot of great ideas about cities. And he found that airports were as important as a high-tech sector or attracting high-skilled talent in promoting economic prosperity in a city. So it is important. Um, this hotel, yes, it's a, a hotel. It's one, one piece of a very important strategic strategy for the airport. Um, recognize also, we have people from the airport and the hotel here today. They're not available to answer questions, but I do want to thank them for attending. Um, and, uh, I guess I'll leave it there and we'll see, we'll see how the vote goes. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you councillor Gower. Um, I'll just say a couple of quick things to wrap up. First of all, I wanted to speak to councillor Brockington's, uh, motion. Which I don't support, but I say that with a smile and I say that respectfully, uh, because as, as the councillor knows, I don't support motions that ask me to write letters. Um, and I also, uh, don't, um. The airport doesn't report to us. It doesn't report to the finance committee. So there's, there's nothing, I support the intent of the motion and I, and the, um. The content of the motion is, is all things that we can do anyway. So we can, I, I can engage with the airport. I can engage with the tourism community. I can. And we can ask the airport to come to a, uh, to our, uh, finance committee meetings without a motion. So. Again, respectfully, I don't support the motion, but we'll let, we'll let the votes go where they go on that. Regarding the motion from councillor Gower, um, I want to be very clear as I was at the committee meeting that I. Uh, support and believe in the airport and I support and believe in its plan to attract more flights to Ottawa. I support and believe in Ottawa tourism and its plan to attract more visitors to Ottawa. And obviously I support and believe in the private sector and in the importance of economic development. And I want to be clear that, uh, you know, that, that this has become such a contentious issue and I respect that and I. And I appreciate all the perspectives that have been shared today. Um, often these decisions get framed as this versus that. Uh, and there are different, a bunch of different versions of that that we've heard. I don't believe that the decisions of city council must always be a choice between economic development. And our other priorities. As I have said many times, I see economic development. As the, the engine that creates the resources that we need. To address our other priorities, including affordable housing, climate change, homelessness, mental health and addiction and so on. Um, I, I want to be clear as well that I support staff and appreciate the hard work that they put into this proposal. And also that I respect the councillors who, uh, support this proposal and I respect their reasons for doing so. Uh, this has been a healthy conversation and I think it underscores why we need to review the CIP program. Uh, and have clear criteria going forward so that we are all in agreement and we're on the same page in terms of what we want from this program. I think the debate that we've seen today is, demonstrates why I'm not a fan of CIPs. Because we all apply different criteria and I think we need more clarity around that going forward. So I hope that we will soon hear the results of that review and be able to move forward with more clarity about. What we will support and what we will not support going forward. Uh, so as you know, I'm not voting for this proposal. That is because, uh, although I do support economic development, the airport and the business community. I don't support, and I have been clear for a very long time about the fact that I do not support. Tax breaks for private businesses and I've been clear and consistent about my feelings about CIPs. Going back to the election campaign and frankly, going back to when I was a columnist and talk show host. I am confident that we will find other ways that do not involve taxpayers' money. To stimulate tourism and economic development and to support the airport's aspiration to become a travel hub. And I am committed to working on these solutions immediately. I've already reached out to engage with leaders at the airport and in the business community to start that work. So, um, I won't be supporting the proposal, but I do support the airport and the work that we need to do going forward. Uh, so let's, uh, call the vote first on councillor Gower's motion and then on councillor Brockington's motion. So on councillor Gower's motion, please.
Councillor Troster.
No.
Councillor Leaper.
No.
Councillor Kits.
Yes.
Councillor DeRoche.
Oh.
Councillor Bradley.
No.
Councillor Lowe.
No.
Councillor Dudas.
Yes.
Councillor Brown.
No.
Councillor Divine.
No.
Councillor Gower.
Yes.
Councillor Curry.
Yes.
Councillor Brockington.
No.
Councillor Johnson.
No.
Councillor Carr.
No.
Councillor Hubley. Conseilleur Plant.
No.
Councillor Luloff.
Yes.
Councillor Menard.
No.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Hill. Councillor Hill. Councillor Tierney.
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
No.
Councillor Kelly.
No.
Councillor DeRus.
No.
Mayor Setcliffe.
No.
Six yeas, 18 nays.
Thank you. Uh, and now, uh, on the Brockington motion, please.
Councillor Troster.
Yes.
Councillor Leaper.
Yes.
Councillor Kits.
No.
Councillor DeRoche.
No.
Councillor Bradley.
Yes.
Councillor Lowe.
No.
Councillor Dudas.
No.
Councillor Brown.
No.
Councillor Divine.
No.
Councillor Gower.
No.
Councillor Curry.
No.
Councillor Brockington. Councillor Johnson.
No.
Councillor Carr.
No.
Councillor Hubley.
No.
Conseilleur Plant.
No.
Councillor Luloff.
Non merci.
Councillor Menard.
Yes.
Councillor King.
Yes.
Councillor Hill.
A yes, and I apologize. I voted yes on the last one. I had a connectivity problem.
Councillor Tierney.
No.
Councillor Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Excuse me. Councillor Kelly.
No.
Councillor DeRus.
Yes.
Mayor Setcliffe.
No.
Nine yeas, 16 nays.
Thank you.
Point of order, point of order, Mr Mayor.
Point of order, yes, councillor Brockington.
I would like to request that the first vote we took, um. Uh, incorporate councillor Hill's, uh, vote.
Is that, is that all right with everyone? Everybody good with that?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I believe we are moving on to item 20 on the agenda and there are no in-camera items. Item 21, disposition of items approved by committees under delegated authority. Uh, is this received? Item 22, motion to adopt reports, councillor Dudas.
Do you like me to read the whole thing or is it up on the screen?
Carry.
It's, it's pretty much the exact same words I said earlier, but the end ends with. At the city council meeting of March 2022, 2023, be received and adopted as amended.
Okay. Okay, carried. All right, item 23, motions of which notice has previously been given, starting with a motion from councillor Menard. Councillor Menard.
Do you, Mayor, if we could just get that up on the screen? Yes, this was about, uh, the fireworks, uh, by law. And so therefore be it resolved that the city of Ottawa grant an exemption to bylaw number 2003 237 as amended to the Ottawa Sports Entertainment Group. To allow for the use of smoke devices for Athletico games starting April 15th, 2023 until December 31st, 2026 for home games and playoff games. If required and granting OSEG an exemption from section 17 of the bylaw. Which requires a permit application to be made 30 days in advance to the proposed use. Subject to OSEG meeting all other permit requirements of the bylaw, including section 18 to the satisfaction of the fire chief and. Be a further resolve that the following, the following the 2024 season, the GM of Emergency Protective Services issue a memo to council summarizing any issues raised by the public. OSEG or OFS regarding the use of smoke devices at TD Place.
All right, is the motion carried? Thank you. Councillor DeRoche.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Uh, first of all, I want to thank councillor Luloff, uh, for seconding this motion and thank him publicly for his service in the military as well as councillor Hill for, um, his service in the military. Uh, this motion, uh, is aimed at recognizing the 100th anniversary of the Royal Canadian Navy reserves across this country. Uh, and locally, the, uh, the 100th anniversary of the HMCS Carlton. Uh, and in this motion, I'm proposing, uh, three means by which we would recognize, uh, the reserve and HMCS Carlton. The first. Um, through you, Mr Mayor, granting of the freedom of the city to HMCS Carlton in September of 2023 and understand protocol. Uh, is, is working on this important, um, uh, ceremony. Uh, planting some, uh, Royal Canadian Navy Reserve two anniversary tulips that have been, uh, developed in partnership with the, uh. The Canadian tourist, uh, Canadian Tulip Festival, the Ottawa Tulip, Tulip Festival. And planting of a commemorative tree in Diamond Jubilee Park in Finley Creek, which I will support through, through my office. Uh, so today we pay tribute to the generations of sailors, officers and support staff who have served with distinction in the Royal Canadian Navy. Uh, we honor their courage, their commitment, their sacrifice. Uh, and as they face adversity, uncertainty and danger and fulfilling their, uh, responsibility to our, to our country and to our, to our city. And to our allies. And, uh, this is an important anniversary, uh, for the reserves and for the Navy. We didn't have a Navy until 1923. Uh, and it was really part of, uh, our country, uh, becoming more, uh, of an international, uh, country on, uh, on, on the international stage. And of course, the Navy served with considerable distinction during the Second World War in, uh, the liberation of Europe. As well as the Battle of the Atlantic. So, uh, again, I, I'm very proud to, to put this forward, uh, today, Mr Mayor, to, uh. To support the men and women and, and staff of the Navy, uh, and to the reserves who, um, uh, basically have undertaken kind of a part-time. Uh, role to, to step up when we need them to step up to serve our community, whether it be floods. Uh, or, or supporting our emergency services or ultimately serving, uh, on a ship or on a submarine. Uh, in some capacity around the world for, uh, protecting, um, our work. Uh, I had the privilege of, uh, attending, uh, a banquet, uh, with, uh, the men and women of HMCS Carlton. And I can tell you that you should be very proud of the work that they are doing onto the leadership of, of Commander Knowlton. So I thank, uh, members for their support today in honoring the Navy reserves. And, uh, the, uh, the important history and contributions of HMCS Carlton locally. Thank you.
Thank you councillor DeRoche. I'll just add a personal note, if you'll permit me, that my late sister was, um. A member of the Royal Canadian Reserves at HMCS Carlton and, uh. Probably most of the happiest moments of her life were spent with, uh, with the people there. So, uh, I appreciate you, uh, bringing this forward. Thank you councillor DeRoche. Is the motion carried? Thank you, everyone. Next councillor Dudas. You have motion seconded by councillor Curry.
Wonderful. I'll, uh, I'll go straight to the therefore be resolved that the city manager and city clerk be directed to notify. Hydro Ottawa of any staff reports and our motions being brought to the city council. That may impact the city of Ottawa's electricity grid or emergency preparedness of the grid. In order that it may provide meaningful guidance and be a further resolved that staff consult with Hydro Ottawa on developing projects in the city of Ottawa. That may impact the electricity grid's current and future capacity resiliency. So that Hydro Ottawa may provide expertise and advice subject to any restrictions contemplated by applicable competition legislation.
Okay, is the motion carried? Councillor Kelly, uh, you have a motion and it's been slightly revised, right?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. And I, I will read it again, but before I do, I want to, I want to thank councillor Brown for, uh, for his help and support on this as well as the time that, uh, staff have taken to, uh. You know, help me, uh, understand all of the, uh, terms and, and how all of this works. So I'll, I'll read the, uh, the amended motion. Um, whereas city council approved the new parkland dedication bylaw on August 31st, 2022. And whereas the bylaw now requires parkland conveyance or cash in lieu of parkland. To be provided to the city before the issuance of a building permit for a new dwelling. If it can all be demonstrated that parkland dedication has been previously satisfied in accordance with the planning act. And whereas the bylaw requires conveyance of parkland or cash in lieu of parkland at 5% of the gross land area. For low-density residential uses. And whereas 60% of the funds paid are allocated to use in the ward in which the developer. and whereas sixty percent of the funds paid are allocated to use in the ward in which the development is located, and forty percent of the funds paid will be allocated for citywide purposes. And whereas section three of the bylaw permits council to waive parkland dedication fees, therefore be it resolved that the city council waive sixty percent of the cash in lieu of parkland fees required for the pending building permit at fifty-seven oh three Loggers Way, and be it further resolved that city council direct staff to review the parkland dedication bylaw to determine whether the bylaw should be amended to extend the transition clauses for rural building permits outside of villages where lands were subdivided for individual residential law purposes prior to the new bylaw coming into force and report back to the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee by Q three of twenty twenty-four. So I'll just take the time to, to explain why I did this and, and what I'm really trying to achieve. I've, I have received a couple of calls from colleagues concerned with what, what it is I'm trying to do here. And for me, until two years ago or a year ago, we did not collect cash in lieu of parkland at the building page or a building permit stage. And so I think there are a lot of people who, who would argue that we shouldn't be doing it at that stage, but that's not what I'm going to be arguing today. And in fact, when I started this process, my goal was not to waive the parkland dedication fee. It was to bring it down to a, a flat rate, which is currently offered at the stage of plan of subdivision and, or creating a lot through consent. So all I'm really trying to do is allow someone getting a building permit, when they have cash in lieu applied at that stage, I would like for them to be able to have the option to choose the flat rate like they do at the other stages of the process. So I think it's somewhat unfair to ask an individual home builder, just trying to build a single home for their family, to pay twenty-one thousand dollars just for cash in lieu of parkland. And I have received a couple of calls from people in my ward concerned about that. I would think that this normally would occur in rural areas, just because of the way plans of subdivision have, have gone since, since amalgamation and people paying cash in lieu of parkland. So someone buys a, a lot and then goes to get a building permit and gets assessed parkland fee, gets surprised, obviously. And again, I'm not here to waive the entire fee. I understand the importance of the cash in lieu of parkland, although that argument is often lost in the rural areas because parks are just less important in the rural areas because people have lots of green space to use and a lot of people have backyards that they can utilize for, for outdoor activities and whatnot. But, but recognizing how important those fees are in terms of delivering parks and recreation services in, in our wards, I do not want to waive it entirely. I just want to make the process more fair for people looking to get a single building permit. So thank you very much, and I'm happy to take some questions and hopefully get this passed.
Thank you, Councillor Kelly. Councillor Kavanaugh?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you wanting to help out the certain people, but I'm concerned about the precedent this sets, especially when we've lost revenue with development charges. So I'd like to get a comment from staff about this being precedent-setting. Having one-offs is always tricky because we, we use that revenue in good faith and, and it's important. So can I get a comment from planning staff or from park staff perhaps?
Mr. Mayor, staff are also concerned with precedent and have discussed with the councillor dating back to, to his initial motion. The Parks Dedication Bylaw, as was approved by council in twenty twenty-two, is under appeal. I think we have over a hundred appeals and, and is currently going through mediation. So we are very mindful of setting precedents in, in terms of both the cash in lieu and the actual taking of land for parks and therefore have advised the councillor that this would be a council decision and to the greatest extent possible that it only apply to this specific property if council deems an exception to be made to, to the bylaw.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And yeah, I, I share the concern, and I will not be supporting this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Kavanaugh. Councillor Bradley?
Thank you, Mayor. Councillor Kavanaugh asked my question to staff, but I also appreciate the intent of, the intent of this motion by Councillor Kelly and, but I also can't support waiving of the fees on a, on a one-off basis, but I would support the review because I appreciate that there's a rural context here that perhaps is not the same in other areas of the city. So if we do call a yes and a no on this motion, I would like to separate those two clauses so we could vote on them separately because the, the second operative clause I could support, just not the waiving of the specific fees. So thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Bradley. Councillor Menard?
Thanks, thank you very much, Mayor. I did talk to, to the councillor, Councillor Kelly, prior to this and appreciate the, the separation of the citywide cash in lieu versus the, the localized cash in lieu. So the citywide would still be realized here, and I've heard other context about these properties in the distant past. At the same time, I think we want to make sure that we're not getting a whole bunch of property owners coming to us and requesting these things on a regular basis. And so, you know, I'm willing to, to support the motion today, but I think the, I'd be concerned about the, the future precedent. That, that's why with the review, I hope staff are very clear about, you know, policy in this regard and have a clear position of, of we support this or we don't. And I'm not hearing that today, but I, I think we need a clear, very clear position from our staff team based on all the work we just did on the, the Parks Dedication Bylaw, Mayor. That was a lot of, that was a lot of effort that went in by, by city staff. And given the appeals that are going on now, I want to hear a clear position from our, from our staff team, and I, I suppose the review will do that. So I'm, I'm willing to hold my nose within support today. And given the, the councillor Kelly's change to, to the motion around citywide CIL, but I do have the concerns about the precedent setting in the future for more of these coming to, to rural councillors especially in, in asking for waiving of these fees. And I, the last point I'll just make, Mayor, is that yes, council is the authority on CIL at, at the end of the day in terms of waiving these fees, but, but these should probably go to ARAC in the first place, right? Should go through the ARAC Committee and then come here for a final decision. So just to, to put that out there too. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Menard. Councillor Brown?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and certainly thanks to my colleague councillor Kelly for bringing this forward. This is a large issue in the rural area. And, you know, a quick Google Maps search will show you that the distance from the subject property that we're discussing today to the closest municipal park is seven and a half kilometers away. The second closest park is twelve kilometers away. And so when we're looking at parkland funds to develop parks and communities, it certainly in my mind would not apply here, also respecting the comments of my colleagues, Mr. Mayor, and in terms of precedent setting, we don't want to do that. But I certainly think this is another example of a one-size-fits-all policy that doesn't quite fit us here. You know, councillors in the rural area, just like our colleagues in the urban area, are supportive of funding for community parks. We just want to make sure those that are paying for them can actually use them. And a seven and a half kilometer distance from the subject property to the closest municipal park certainly is evidence that this policy does warrant a review, which is why I was pleased to second this motion, Mr. Mayor, from my colleague. That's all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councillor Brown. Councillor DeRusse?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm, like, I'm a little bit, this is a little bit slippery slope for us, and especially in rural area, but I like to hear the comment from our staff concerning this motion, and are we setting precedence on that or not? And what else? Another application on another group is going to come for us to start bringing motion to council. So if someone can answer that, that would be great.
Mr. Mayor, staff have, have looked at this and, and our comments from the beginning were that we did not see this rationale fitting into anything that staff could recommend. That's why this is before you today. Our other advice to the councillor was, to the extent possible, that this motion be made specific to this property only, so that it does not create a precedent in, in a clear, direct way.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I like to refer this back to ARAC, and I do have a probably a motion, and I have a second, or probably councillor Kit will second my motion, if that's okay with, with you.
Motion to refer it to ARAC. Okay. Yep, so we'll now discuss the motion to refer.
Sorry, can I just interrupt there? I'd like to get clarification from staff if that's possible, because when I first started this pursuit, again, my, my goal was not to waive it. The only reason I'm trying to waive it is because we can't change the bylaw till later on because of all of those appeals. So I worked with staff to sort of alleviate that. But it was my understanding that only council can waive cash in lieu of parkland fees, and therefore we would not be able to do this at ARAC. That's my understanding. Can I get clarification on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Yep, go ahead.
I'll allow legal services or operational staff to add to this, but my understanding is that if this matter were to be referred to the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee, it would then need to rise back to council for a final decision.
Okay. So, all right, so we're now discussing the motion to refer this to the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee. Councillor Low?
Well, my, my, my question was for the original motion.
Okay. Councillor Leaper, do you want to speak to the new motion?
I do. I, I would be happy enough to refer this back to committee. I, I don't see a problem with passing this today. I know I had a chance to chat with councillor Kelly and with staff as well on this one. The, the motion is crafted such that it's an issue between the councillor and his community because it is the ward portion that's waived. So I, I, I'm ready to support the motion as it stands today without necessarily referring it, but if that's the decision that council takes, I suppose that's fine too.
Thank you, Councillor Leaper. Councillor Tierney?
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I appreciate everything my council colleagues doing. I actually grew up a consensus-based, so I completely understand there's differences. So just on the item of referral, we always like to have the opportunity for the public to come out and speak, and this will give that opportunity. So I'm hoping my council colleague supports that, going to ARAC, it'll allow the public to come out and, you know, the, the farmers and everything can fight it out, and then we can bring it back here and support it at the end of the day if everyone feels correct with it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Tierney. Councillor Gower?
What is the date of the next ARAC meeting, and then what day could it come back to council?
Mr. Mayor, my understanding is that the next meeting of the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee is the first week of May, which would allow it to rise to council, likely at the first council meeting in May.
Okay, thank you. I was cognizant there may be some urgency if someone's trying to obtain a building permit, so that's still a month, so perhaps in a wrap-up, or perhaps councillor Kelly, if you comment on that now, is there a concern if we wait another month for that applicant?
Yeah, councillor Kelly, did you want to speak to the referral motion and, and councillor Gower's question?
I'm happy to, to discuss this further at ARAC. I, I, I think that's actually a better place for the discussion and that we can come back here, but it, the only reason I'm here today is because I thought my only avenue, not only to help this individual, but generally speaking, I just find it unfair that single home builder buying a building permit is assessed these crazy fees. And again, not trying to eliminate it. So yeah, I'm happy to have that conversation at ARAC and, and flesh it out there and, and hear from the public, which I think would be helpful for my argument. So yeah, let, let's do that.
Okay, then on the referral motion, is that carried? Okay, thank you. So let's move to motions requiring suspension of the rules of procedure. There's a motion from councillor Leaper, seconded by councillor Gower, that is time-sensitive regarding one hundred Stacy Drive. Councillor Leaper, did you, do you want to speak?
What I'll do, Mayor, is, oh, um, yeah, so this is with respect to the Ontario Land Tribunal hearing, the Stacy and the upcoming exchange of witness lists, so I'm asking that this be walked on.
Okay, so on suspension of the rules, is that carried?
I'll, I'll read the motion, Mayor, and then I'll ask Mr. White or one of the legal team to give the council some context. Whereas the witness list for the one hundred Stacy hearing is to be submitted on April thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, and whereas Legal Services has not been successful in retaining a witness to provide planning opinion evidence, therefore be it resolved that the rules of procedure be suspended to permit the following notion. Whereas on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, city council refused the rezoning application in respect of one hundred Stacy, and whereas Legal Services reached out to six planning firms to seek to retain opinion evidence in support of the position of council, and whereas no firm accepted the retainer, therefore be it resolved that Legal Services be instructed to advise the Ontario Land Tribunal that the city will not oppose the rezoning application in respect of one hundred Stacy from IP six to R four Y oh one and oh one R as detailed in the staff report. And I'll turn that over to staff for, for the context on this.
Mayor, I think some, there was some additional context circulated by memo this morning. I think that the memo itself is largely self-explanatory, and I don't purport to be like Mr. Mark, an expert in the planning area, but suffice to say that the city's position needs to be supported by external expert evidence, and in the event that we are unable to provide that, the likelihood of success at the tribunal is negligible. And as a result, while I think that would, the outcome would be essentially predetermined once the, the city is unable to provide in its witness list the evidence of that professional planning consultant. Always prefer to have the, the understanding, the direction of council in that regard, rather than simply having that play out as it would.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Leaper, anything else? Okay, councillor Currie?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as you can imagine, the community of Kanata North is quite upset about this. However, I, what I really want to do is thank Tim Mark and the legal staff and the mayor's staff for all of their help in the last-ditch efforts. The amount of work that went on trying to get a planner, engineers to defend the city's position was admirable, and I really appreciate that. So does the community. I've made that very clear to the community that every effort was made, and even the community had a planner that they tried to get. The, the effort was huge. Let, I just want to remind people who voted in support of the community here and people who weren't here, that this is a, a development where it's an apartment building in an industrial park beside a wood processing plant and a nuclear facility with no transportation options within a kilometer, with no pedestrians, sidewalks, no lighting in the industrial park, and two failed intersections on the street and then the next street over, unbelievable traffic congestion, and rightly so, this council rejected that application because this council said, that's not a, a good place for people to live. This does not work. So what we are facing with planners not taking cases like that, even though our legal staff believed we had a very, very strong case at, at the OLT, is that we have a, a number of bills that have been passed that say housing anywhere, wetlands, greenbelt, wherever, anywhere, it doesn't matter. And that's just a warning, I think, to all of us on planning committee and at council, what we may be facing when we see applications that you know your community, it, it are not good for your community, but the climate at the OLT is such that planners are saying, why would I spend the time? It's going to fail. You know, there's, there's a view at the OLT that, you know, what does it matter? Let's build on a wetland. So I, I want everyone to understand that and appreciate how disappointed the community is because it was such a strong case, and it's not a good place for people to live. And I certainly hope that we have site plan. We don't have a lot of say in site plan, but our staff do. There are things that can be done to make sure that it is actually a safe place for people to live. Anyway, so I don't really want to support this, but I think it's silly to vote against it because it's something we have to do now. But anyway, I just want to make sure you're all aware of what this one was about. Anyway, thank you again to staff and to the mayor's staff for all of your help.
Thank you, councillor Currie. Councillor Bradley?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. This is just, I've not seen a, a motion like this before, and unfortunately I didn't have an opportunity to read the memo that came out just after nine AM this morning. So I just wanted to clarify that the firms that you reached out to refused to be a witness on behalf of the city, and that's the requirement of the, the OLT, is that we have a witness, like they did not support the city's position in this case. Is that what transpired?
Yes, Mayor.
And is that typical of what you're seeing as to councillor Currie's comments, is that we're unable to, like, six firms sufficient in terms of doing our due diligence to retain a planner that might support the city's position? a planner that might support the city's position?
I think I wouldn't say that it's it's typical in any scenario. I think it merely reflects the the external consultants' views of the 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 planning rationale for this particular, for this particular matter.
I appreciate that. And while I might support this this application, it does concern me when we can't retain experts to support a city's position in a legal capacity, and so we just dropped the case. But I'll support the motion, but I just wanted to to make that comment.
Thank you, councillor Bradley. So is the is the motion carried? Okay, thank you, everyone. There are no notices of motion that I'm aware of. So the motion to introduce bylaws, councillor Dudas.
That the bylaws listed on the agenda under motion to introduce bylaws, three readings be read and passed.
All right, is that carried? The confirmation bylaw, councillor Dudas.
Well, see, that the following bylaw be read and passed to confirm the proceedings of the council meeting of April 12, 2023.
Is that carried? All right, inquiries, councillor Divine.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So with regard to the inquiry, based on today or based on recent amendments to the to the Kavanaugh motion and based on the ensuing consultations I had here this morning with staff, the the inquiry I've I've submitted is slightly different than what was written last night. I'm not sure what you're looking at, but the the current inquiry, which is to the General Manager of Planning, Real Estate Economic Development, to the General Manager of Emergency and Protective Services and to Legal Services. The inquiry is, would city staff please provide counsel with answers to the following questions regarding the removal of a large number of trees from the AOO Taggart lands adjacent to the Taywin lands? Question one, do you have an estimate of the number of trees that have been removed from the property since tree clearing began on or around February 17? If so, how was the estimate determined? If not, why have we not? Question two, should staff determine that this tree clearing was not carried out in accordance with normal farm practices? What action would the city take to A remediate the tree loss in accordance with the no net loss policy, which is policy 4.8.1.5 in the new official plan? And B, what action would the city take to pursue the enforcement of appropriate bylaws pursuant to the inappropriate removal of trees? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Divine. Next inquiry is from councillor Hubley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe this has been circulated to everybody. It's a lesson learned, I'll call it, from the storm. Over the last few years, the city of Ottawa has been experiencing weather events that are significantly stronger and more frequent than they have been in the past. In turn, we are seeing larger areas of the city lose power for more than just a few hours. These power outages extend to our street lights and our traffic lights, and in some areas, this makes them driving at night extremely hazardous. I would like to ask that staff look into what options might be available to us to help make the intersections more visible and safe during a power outage. I would also like to know if staff can provide an estimated estimated cost of adding additional reflective tape to our traffic intersections, traffic lights, sorry, and intersections in the interim, or is there a possible permanent solution to help ensure that traffic signals are visible during power outages, which will increase safety for motors and pedestrians? And, Mr. Mayor, what I'm talking about is some of our lights around the city, they have installed reflective tape. So if you're driving through that intersection at night and the streetlights and the lights are out, the the reflective tape will actually tell you there's lights there. So, you know, according to the rules of the driving rules, you should treat it as a four-way stop. I just think we have to do a little more for the intersections where there is no tape. Because I actually witnessed the firsthand where cars just blew through the intersections. And I'd like to think it's because they couldn't see the lights and just weren't recklessly driving during the storm. So is this, so this is an inquiry I'm putting in, hoping we get an answer back and appreciate that.
Thank you, councillor Hubley. Are there any other inquiries? Okay, motion to adjourn, councillor Dudas.
That the proceedings of the city council meeting of April 12, 2023 be adjourned.
Carried. Thank you, everyone.
Good afternoon. Bonjour à tous. My name is Kendra Tittle, and I will be your moderator. Je m'appelle Kendra Tittle et je serai l'animaître de ce point de presse. I will now invite each agency in alphabetical order to ask their questions. You may ask one question with one follow-up. When asking your questions, please identify who your question is directed to, and if you are in council chambers, please use the microphone. We'll now start with, nous allons commencer par Kate Porter at CBC Ottawa.
Hi, everybody. I'm actually hoping for some thoughts, reflections on the housing bill from last Thursday, I guess it was, the fourth housing bill in Ontario. And it discusses a lot about, well, the criticisms, at least so far, is that we could encroach more on farmland, more housing in rural areas. I wonder, perhaps I'll go to you first, Dawn, just like first thoughts at seeing this. There was a lot in there and what you think it might mean for the city, just given that Bill 23 passed in December.
Thanks. Yeah, there's a lot there. We're we're diving into it. There's proposed changes to the site plan limits on the 10 units or less, maybe pulling back a little bit in sensitive areas. There's a new PPS that's being provincial policy statement that's being consulted on. Rental replacement. A lot of changes that were released Thursday before the long weekend. So as you can imagine, we're just starting to dive into it. So all I'll say is there's a lot there and a lot more work to be done in terms of responding to and preparing comments, too. So there'll be there'll be more to come at a future date.
Perhaps to you, Mayor Suckliff, then, because there's also, I mean, you could do an urban boundary change at any time, or like just changes there that that change that relationship with the province. And also I see, you know, ministerial zoning orders, et cetera, in various places where the minister could just impose something on the city. I wonder what your thoughts are on that. Just the development of the relationship in terms of urban planning, especially given we spent some time here just looking at one specific element of the tree bylaw, right? But but there's that bigger picture that this is all playing into, and it's also changing at the same time.
So I don't have a lot to add to what Dawn said. I we're still taking a look at everything and what the implications are, and we'll probably have more to say about it later. We continue to work closely with the provincial government, and we share the goal of building more homes, but in terms of the details of this, I we're gonna, you know, I want to hear what staff have to say and what the implications are before I comment in more detail.
Okay, I know it's a big, it's a lot of readings.
Thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
Pensez-vous que le troisième Do you think that the financial assistance the city provided to Porsche dealership gave a black eye to the city? And that's why there's so much reluctance to support financially the hotel project? But according to the residents in Ottawa, or well, you know, for me, it's a position I had for the past few years because I wrote on this. I wrote articles on this when I was at the Citizen. And when I worked on radio shows. It's always difficult for for residents, I believe, to see their tax money handed to private businesses. So I think this is why we need to review the program and establish clearer criteria for the future. So wouldn't it be preferable to simply abolish this program to avoid the controversy? Well, I'm waiting for the city's recommendation. And I believe that there are circumstances where council may want to use that method to stimulate development in an area where there are needs. I hope that after the review by the team we'll be able to work with clearer criteria criterias attached to, that would be attached to our priorities.
Première question. Vous avez parlé aujourd'hui des pratiques agricoles normales aujourd'hui. Qu'allez-vous faire par la suite? Qu'allez-vous examiner? Et à quel moment est-ce que cette question sera soumise de nouveau au conseil de la ville?
Thanks for the question. So, yeah, there's been a lot of discussion since the, you know, the tree cutting incident in terms of, is that a normal firm practice? So we're, there is this board that's been set up, you know, there was some discussion today around that. So we're going to be, you know, trying to find out from the board, you know, if there's any direction past precedent. We're going to be consulting with the Ministry of Agricultural Agricultural and Rural Affairs, the provincial ministry, who are responsible for agriculture. If they can give us any guidance in terms of the normal firm practices aspect of this whole discussions. We're also looking at other municipalities that you know, have been faced with this in the past. And if they have any guidelines that would help the city inform its tree tree bylaw approach in the future.
Real quick follow-up on that. Do you know if it's actually going to be possible? There was a question raised today, but there is a formal process, of course, of going to the board, that that's not what what is happening here. What you're proposing with consultation? Like, do you know if this tribunal will even like how that would work, how, if they're open to doing this?
Yeah, as as legal indicated, we don't. It is set up as more of a dispute resolution system, but with other boards, there is, you know, the potential of talking to the caseworker, you know, the administration that supports that board to see if we can glean any insights there. And we'll also be talking, as I mentioned, to the the governing ministry in terms of, you know, the provincial ministry responsible for agriculture to see what insights we we can gain there based on other experiences they've had across the province.
Thank you, Taylor.
Oui, bonjour. Hello. I I don't know if you could actually come back into French. You didn't support today the hotel project at the airport. Can you provide more information? Can you repeat the question, please? Can you repeat? Can you hear me? Yes. Why is it that the city council rejected the hotel project within SIP? I was referring to the hotel project at the Ottawa Airport that was looking into the community improvement plan and a subvention. You could actually ask the city councillor. This is not the type of project that I support. I don't think that residents want to see their taxes used to subsidize a private business, such as an hotel at the airport. I support the Ottawa Airport. I support economic development. But this is now how to use SIP. This is not the way to go. Follow-up question? And how should we proceed with the hotel project? Answer? I think we can stimulate economic development as well as tourism in Ottawa. And I hope that in the next few weeks we will be able to explain better how we can help the tourism industry as well as the airport. If we have more tourists in Ottawa, this is better for everyone, including for the Ottawa Airport.
On the hotel?
Yeah, yeah.
So, you know, as I've said many times, I support economic development. I support the airport. I support the tourism sector, the visitor economy. I just don't think this is the way to do it. And I've I've said many times, including during the election campaign, that I don't support taxpayers' money going to specific private businesses. And I think we saw during the council meeting today, very strong arguments that were presented on both sides. I think it was a healthy process, but I think we also saw why we need to tighten the criteria for community improvement plans going forward. So there's clarity about when we intend to use them and when and when we don't.
Thank you very much. This concludes today's media availability. Ceci conclut le point de presse d'aujourd'hui. Thank you.